Good evening, we're back to open the regular meeting of the Fairfax Town Council on August 4th, 2021. And if we can begin with a roll call, or do we need to do the roll call, Michelle? Or is this, this is a separate room, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. If you would like, please.
Certainly, I'd be happy to. Councilmember Goddard.
I'm here.
Councilmember Kohler.
I'm here.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Here.
And Mayor Ackerman.
I'm also here. Okay, and if we can look at the approval of the agenda and affidavit of posting. Any changes suggested to the agenda or a motion to approve it in the affidavit of posting?
I make a motion to approve the agenda and affidavit of posting, Mayor.
Okay, motion Kohler, second, Vice Mayor Hellman. Michelle, if you could take that roll call.
Councilmember, yes, sir. Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
And Mayor Ackerman.
Yes.
All ayes, motion passes.
Okay, and so I will read the land acknowledgement and the meeting protocol. The land acknowledgement, the Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Miwok people of present day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. The meeting protocol, the mayor shall maintain order at the meetings, the council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain standards of tolerance and civility. The town council will review the agenda at about 10:00 PM to ascertain whether we need to continue items, and again at 11:30. But we have hopes that we will be finished by 11:30. So a few announcements, we have vacancies on boards and commissions, the applications are available on the town website or by contacting our town clerk, Michelle Gardner, who's on this call. The Affordable Housing Committee has one vacancy, the Climate Action Committee has up to four vacancies, Parks and Recreation Commission has one vacancy, Volunteer Board, I believe, now has one vacancy, because we just appointed Holly Clark, thank you. The RESJ has currently six vacancies and two youth vacancies. And the Open Space Committee has one vacancy, so there are many places to step forward. There is a survey now up on the town website and in the newsletter as well regarding outdoor dining spaces and use of public spaces in the downtown. So please make use of that survey to give us your thoughts on this, on this item. And the Fairfax Food Pantry, as it always does, will be operating on Saturdays from 8:00 to 10:00 AM at the Fairfax Community Church. I believe there is an announcement that Councilmember Goddard will, will give on behalf of the Water District.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thanks everyone who's tuned in and my colleagues for listening to this very important announcement. We'll be coming in periodically to remind people, a little update about the, the present situation with our water supply. So the Marin Water District is obviously requesting, requiring at this point that we reduce our water consumption district-wide by 40%. The latest figures are showing us that 20, that we have reduced, and this is district-wide, by only 24%. So there's definitely room for improvement. Due to these historic conditions, the Water District has limited spray irrigation to one day a week. Fridays, Friday is Fairfax's day to spray, so Friday is the only day that we are allowed to use our spray irrigation. You can use irrigation up to two times per week, and that's your in-ground drip irrigation. And the recommendation is really only as much as possible to do spot watering. I just want to say that it's very easy to capture water in your bucket when your sink is running or in your shower, and there are many creative ways to do that. And that serves as excellent spot watering water. Marin Water is also offering $3 per square foot for replacing your lawn with drought-resistant landscaping. And there are multiple other rebates and offers being offered by the district at this time. One very interesting one is called the Flume Meter. The district is offering 75% off for a total of $50. This is a meter that attaches directly to your water meter and it communicates through your Wi-Fi, only in your own home, your real-time water usage. It can also alert you about any leaks. It also will alert you if you have an excessively high water usage at any given real time. And the way to find out about all of this is on the Marin Water website, very simple, marinwater.org/rebates. You will see it, so we encourage and thank everyone for your compliance. And we are again, all in this together, and we'll be checking in periodically with one another and, and supporting one another as we move through this. So that was my announcement, and on to one quick festive announcement, that is that the town of Fairfax is hosting our first musical gathering on the Ball Field this Friday evening from 6 o'clock until dusk. And that is a dance jam with Tom Finch, our very own Tom Finch. The Ball Field allows for space for safe distancing. We encourage people to bring your own food and come on out and support our local beloved Tom Finch and his band. So this Friday on the Ball Field, 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. And if anybody didn't see it, the front page article on the IJ this Sunday was quite chilling about some of the other communities in, close to us, that are really seeing that this water shortage is no joke. Okay, and so we have a presentation by interim town man, of interim town manager Adam Pollitzer, and also of our interim Public Works Director Jonathan Goldman. Adam, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and I won't spend any time introducing myself. You folks did that back on July 7th, and so thank you, and a big thank you to all of you for such a warm welcome. Jonathan Goldman, Michelle, I don't know if Jonathan is in the, I think he's probably in the audience, so maybe he can raise his hand and he can bring Jonathan up on the screen so the public can see, see him, and, and I'll do a quick introduction of Jonathan, and then he can say a few words at the conclusion. But I'm very pleased to share with the council and the town of Fairfax that we have, we have Jonathan Goldman joining our team as our interim Public Works Director. Jonathan comes with a wealth of experience and knowledge, and we are very fortunate, in my humble opinion, to have Jonathan on our team. Jonathan's first day was on Monday, August 2nd, and I was pleased to see him return on Tuesday, August 3rd, after a full day with me and several council members who had an opportunity to meet him. Obviously, all of the staff, all the town staff had an opportunity to meet him, and I think I'll let him speak for himself, but, but we were very pleased to have Jonathan join our team on, on Monday. So Jonathan will, is, is a retired California employee, and like myself, is limited to 960 hours. Our goal here is to have Jonathan work the next six months, serving as our interim Public Works Director. And if we're successful, he will overlap with the permanent Public Works Director that the town is presently starting that recruitment to bring on the permanent Public Works Director. I'd like to highlight a few things about Jonathan. One is that Jonathan's been in the public sector for 20 years, serving 15 of those years as Public Works Director, both in Sausalito and in St. Helena in Napa County. And then additionally, Jonathan has over 20 years' experience in the private sector. So his, his knowledge of both the private sector and the public sector is a great guide to, to our community. Jonathan holds an undergraduate degree in hydrology from the University of Arizona and a master's in civil engineering from MIT. So again, very, very knowledgeable and experienced, both on the academic side as well as the experience in the field side. Jonathan lived in Marin County for over 20 years, raising his three kids. His youngest is a senior at the University of Texas. And you know, we're, we're very excited that Jonathan has that longevity here in our county, knows the players, knows the communities, knows Fairfax very well, as he was, he lived most of that 20 years right here in neighboring town of Ross. Jonathan moved to Tucson, Arizona after he retired in 2019, but he will temporarily relocate and, and be part of our community here in Fairfax during his term as our interim Public Works Director. So I encourage the community, I know the council has already reached out to Jonathan, several of you have already met him in person, but I encourage the community to come visit Jonathan out in the Corporation Yard and introduce themselves to, to him, and I'm sure that he would love to meet as many people as possible to really get a full understanding of, of the opportunities and challenges that await him. So Jonathan, if you'd like to say a few words, welcome to the town Fairfax.
Thank you very much. One of my favorite opening lines is, anyone who can't hear me, please raise their hand. That, that being said, I am really grateful for the opportunity, and I won't belabor anything, because I know you have a full agenda, and I've only been here a very short time. There, I can't think of anyone else other than perhaps my mother, who I would have said yes as quickly to as I did to Adam Pollitzer. And I want to, you know, give credit to you on the council and the community for recognizing that, and to Garrett Toy, recognizing that the availability of this kind of interim help and, and the person of Adam, you know, has a, has a big upside. I'm not going to necessarily represent the same for myself, but in the time that Adam and I have worked together, and Adam alluded to it a little bit, he was my daughter's one and only softball coach when, when she was in second grade, I think. And we established a relationship, he's an amazing coach in, you know, 15 different dimensions and orchestra leader and, and manager of local government. And so I consider it an honor that he called me, and then I have the opportunity to work with him again and to serve the community of Fairfax. The people that I have met already, certainly council members, but, and I don't mean to minimize the importance of council members, but also city staff, I'm actually incredibly impressed with, and it makes me even more grateful and excited to have the opportunity to, to work with the team of people who were here before Adam and I joined. And I look forward to doing everything I can, as long as you want me to be here. And to, to helping set things up for the next Public Works Director to be successful, and the staff that are already there to continue to be successful and grow in their professional capacities, and the same with the next town manager. So my door is always open, sometimes there are two or three people in it, today it was AT&amp;T and some other folks. So I'm not a, I'm not a, an imperialist, so feel free, please, to get ahold of me if you have comments or concerns, and I will absolutely make time to do my best to, you know, share what I can about the situations that, that I'm responsible for dealing with, and hope that we continue to be successful in dealing with the challenges that we have in front of us. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Jonathan, and thank you, Adam. Okay, so we are going to try something different tonight. The, there has always been the, the question in town of how we structure our council meetings so that we can hopefully get finished a bit more reasonable hour. People would, people especially would like to be able to have the issues that they're here to, to comment on and to hear about come up earlier in the evening. So what we're going to, to try to do, and this was a suggestion from Adam, our new interim town manager, from other towns that have tried this and with success, we will have open time for public expression on items not on the agenda, this will be our next item. We'll do that for 30 minutes, and then if there is more to be said, we'll continue that at the end of tonight's meeting, after the rest of the agenda. And that way, people who are here for specific items will be able to hear those items at a, at a more reasonable hour, and council will be more able to get through those items. And if I can just ask for people to just raise your hands really quickly right now if you intend to speak at the open time on items not on the agenda. I see a hand from Chance, but I'm, I'm just gauging, while, while we see how many people raise their virtual hand, Chance, what did you?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to add for members of the public, as we're, we're trying this new approach, just a reminder that you can always send in comments or concerns or questions via Michelle Gardner, whose email is on the town website, and those will all come to the council as well. So I just wanted to make that announcement.
Thank you for adding that, yes, and we definitely see those. Okay, it looks like we don't have too many people right now, actually five by my count, so we can go ahead with the normal three minutes, and we will, we can proceed now with the open time for expression of items not on the agenda. Michelle, if we can begin with that.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Let me just start the timer video. We're trying this a new way, too. And there we go. Okay, so the first speaker is Jody Tims, and you are unmuted now.
Good evening, staff and mayor and council members. Let me start by really thanking you for setting those timeframes for the agenda items after waiting four and a half hours, as you know, last month to get my, to listen to my item, it got pulled, so I'm really delighted to see us trying to manage time a little better. I do also want to say that I strongly support the existence and the work of the RESJ Committee, about which I did not comment last month, given how late it was, though I really wanted to, but I do think, again, just generally discussions and time allotments need better management so that those of us who want to get involved can stay involved and be engaged with our local government. I do want to say I'm really happy to have served on the Commission on Aging on behalf of the town for the last seven to eight years, and I'm excited to work with JOZA as I continue on as the Chair of Age Friendly Fairfax. This month, our Breakfast with Friends will be on August 18th at Barefoot Cafe, and the Forum will be on August 25th. And this one's going to be on technology help for older adults, so please check out the town's website for details, if those are of any interest to community members. Also, as a member of the Climate Action Committee, this year I'm going to be, I am chairing the Ad Hoc Transportation Subcommittee, and we're hoping to host a zero emissions vehicle, car, and e-bike show, hopefully in late September. So, community members, if any of you are thinking you might, might need a new car in the next one to two years, I really want to urge you to check out the website, Drive Clean Marin, and check out their events, they have two classes, EV 101 and EV 102, along with tons of information on electric cars and charging and financing. And also then, please keep an eye out for our Fairfax events, which hopefully will be funded by TAM and in collaboration with Drive Clean, Drive Clean Marin. Every time a car starts, a gasoline car starts and travels down the road, particulate matter and greenhouse gases flood into our environment, contributing to climate change and hotter everything. And as we know, making life seriously problematic for all creatures. And finally, just wanted to mention Fairfax Firewise and Neighborhood Response Group leaders will be tabling this year at the town picnic. So we hope that you come by and learn more about these two vital climate change adaptation programs, and learn more about how you can get involved in your neighborhood around fire safety and emergency preparedness. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jody.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Jamie McMillan. And I have unmuted you.
Thank you, I've got a general question about the health order that was just issued on the mask guidance. As far as I can tell from the CDC data, it looks like the risk profile that we have currently with vaccination rates as they are for COVID is roughly the same as what a typical flu year looks like, but we're slipping back into health orders now. And while I understand that the Health Department has one lens that they kind of view, you know, the health risk through, obviously state and local reps have a broader view and are a venue for potentially pushing back on what the guidance might be, that's just viewed through a risk profile as opposed to kind of other societal benefits or rights. So I'm wondering, out of ignorance, really, what can the council do to push back on, on this order that's come out, or potentially future orders that might come out? What have you done so far, given it's about a day and a half old, probably there's not a lot of time to do anything about that now, and what do you plan to do in the future?
Thank you, Jamie.
Okay. And typically, the council doesn't answer questions during open time, I might add.
Yes.
Okay, so the next speaker is John or Jane. And you're unmuted now, you might have to unmute yourself.
Am I muted?
Yeah, now you're good.
Thank you, good evening. Jane Richardson-Mack, 40-year resident of Fairfax. I'm here to say that I, I'm not happy to say, but I feel very strongly that Veronica Garrett should be asked to step down and be removed from both the RESJ Committee and the PPPSA Committee. She has exhibited a very narrow-minded, not-inclusive behavior and attitude, and holding up a sign while I was speaking is just not the way, we don't need people like that representing us or forming policy for the rest of us. I mean, I am still astonished at all of you in the town council that you said nothing and did nothing, except for Barbara Kohler, who had the dignity, the intelligence, and the spine to stand up and say something's wrong when it's wrong. Surely, none of you agree that that was, that's the kind of representation we deserve, the town, our town of Fairfax? It's not, and Renee, you defended her, she said, oh, she was frustrated. Are we going to, to accept any kind of bad behavior from people because they're simply frustrated? We can't have someone like that advising the police department, and at the moment, she's the only one with Bruce, so that, that whole thing should be disbanded. We don't need it. There's no, there's nobody volunteering, it's not necessary, we have a good police department, we're not Chicago, we're not Detroit, we're not Oakland, we're Fairfax. That should never have happened in the first place. And basically, I guess that's what I have to say, and I hope that you will stand up, and regardless whether you are sympathetic with her, or what you think of her as a person, or how much you like her, or respect the work that she's done, I'm sure she believes in herself and has others who believe, but she's not in control of her behavior, and we can't have people like that dictating policy to the rest of us. So please do the right thing, make her step down, and actually, start the RESJ Committee all over fresh, and include other people, not just people who have one mindset, one voice, and quite frankly, are following the dictates of, of one book. There are many books out there on this topic. A public dialogue, debates, conversation, include the public, don't shut them out, you're just, you're just caving into the fears of these people. We, the public, have asked repeatedly, tell us what we've said that was so harmful and fearful, we have never gotten a reply. We've asked time and time again, I've listened to their meetings, I've never heard anything that was harmful or threatening. This is just the wrong, the wrong people, the wrong committee, it's time to start over, it happened too fast, there were only two, Renee and Stephanie, I believe, you were the ones that started the RESJ Committee, we need all to be included, thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Mr. Mayor, I might suggest, just in case other people want to comment on that matter, that we do have Item 19, which is talking more about the RESJ, so you may not want to do that in open time, thank you.
Next speaker is Barbara McFay, you're unmuted now.
Great, good evening to you. I just returned from Guatemala two days ago, I've been very curious to understand what's going on, it was my fourth trip to Guatemala. I've always had a bit of a love affair with the Guatemalan country and a tight relationship with the Guatemalan people here in Marin County, understanding many of their personal stories, traumas, and journeys. I think we have an opportunity here in Fairfax to be one of the first cities in the nation to offer an apology to the indigenous Mayan of Guatemala, based on the horrendous horrors of the 1980s genocide that we supported under Reagan. 150,000 Mayan indigenous people were slaughtered, men, women, and children, that we supported. It's time to acknowledge this uncomfortable history that too many people have forgotten. When we hear our nannies, our housekeepers, our gardeners, our roofers, that we pay exploitative wages, it is time to offer an apology for what we did to them less than 35 years ago. We don't have to look back 100 years ago, we can look back at our own generation. It's time to say sorry, because those very traumas have what, has what has driven the immigration today. Okay? Their presidency, their oligarchy controls their country, and we supported that, we supported that, while the peasants suffered. Their only hope was to leave their country, to come here to Marin, to serve you, to serve our community with wages that are ridiculous, raising our children, cleaning our homes, doing our gardens. We owe them, and this is the time to do that. I think we have the guts to do that here in Fairfax, because we actually care about people. And we want to make a statement, about a human rights statement, and again, to say the sorry for what we did and how we have been silent about it for 35 years. We want to acknowledge those people who are in the shadows of our own community, but add value to our lives every day. Women who haven't seen their children in 20 years, because they can't bring them from Guatemala to our own community. Young people who haven't seen their own mothers for 20 years, because they can't travel back to Guatemala, but they're here to raise our children. It's time to do this, and I think you would be incredibly bold and courageous to be one of the first city council members in our entire nation to uproot this history that is uncomfortable, but it is time to come clean with it.
Thank you, Barbara.
The next speaker is, it says Mal F., I think it might be Mallory. You're unmuted now.
Good evening, actually, it's Malcolm Fearon.
I'm sorry.
No problem, it's my fault.
No problem. It's my fault. And I'd like, good evening, everyone. I'd like to bring to the council's attention the current disrepair and condition of the road surface on Scenic Road between Azalea and Arroyo. There's a small hill there, and there's constantly heavy machinery and traffic using that road. And the condition of the road has been deteriorating ever since we moved here in 2010. Occasionally, the town will patch or fill in the potholes. But this is usually lasts maybe two months, and then the potholes reappear again. And I think it's become a safety issue now for cyclists who use that road. They're constantly riding on the other side of the road to avoid the potholes and the debris that the road is generating. And I realize that maybe this isn't the right space to bring this up, and maybe I should go to the Public Works Department. But I just wanted to raise the issue tonight because I think it's a safety concern for all. And also, the vibration through the properties on that section of road has become a little bit unbearable. Occasionally, we think it's an earthquake, but it's just another large truck passing by where the vibration intensified by the state of the repair of the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Malcolm.
Mayor, may I add, this is the right venue to express these concerns. So thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is a call-in user. There is no number showing, but you're the only telephone caller at this point. So I have unmuted you. You might have to press star six or otherwise unmute your phone.
Not, not unmuted. There we go.
Yes. Hi. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is James Cosgrove, and I want to say welcome to the interim City Manager and the Department of Public Works. And I think it's, they sound like excellent resources and resources I believe this town is well in need of. And I'd like to just dovetail off of the other gentleman that called about the road conditions. And my concern is, my specific concern for the council, serious concern, is the oversight and lack and mismanagement of the large residential construction that's taking place in the hills of Fairfax, specifically Bay Road and up on Scenic. And I just want to, you know, I want to say it's about the building of the homes. But I do want to say that I believe that everyone, I love Fairfax, and everyone has a right to build a home of their dreams in the hills of Fairfax, following, you know, planning and if they need to get a variance, et cetera. But at what, what cost? And the cost is the destruction of the roads, the destruction of personal property, and absolutely no oversight of the construction that's taking place. If the city, and I'm glad we have some new resources, if the city takes the planning resolutions that are imposed on these construction sites and overlays them over the actuality of what's taking place at these sites and the ingress and egress at these construction sites, which is Bay Road and Scenic, it's not enforced and there's violations everywhere. I know that people have called months in advance. I've called months in advance. My concerns, expressing my concerns of the size of the trucks that are coming up, up Scenic and up Bay Road. And we have trucks in excess of 50,000 to 60,000 pounds of material that is coming up on an unimproved, unmaintained road in the, in the hills of Fairfax, vibrating the houses, causing cracks in driveways, causing cracks in retaining walls, garages. I mean, it is a concern that should be brought up immediately, and we're in the process of getting a petition. And so my other concern is, is that where is the oversight with this construction project of traffic management? There is none. There's no bats. I mean, these trucks are coming up, and I just want to let you know, a guy with a cigarette hanging out of his mouth on a cell phone, putting his hand up, is in traffic management. It was a serious accident that was unrecorded. OSHA would have a field day with it where it slid 70 feet down the road. I was right behind the car in front, and there was a young girl right there, could have killed somebody. And there was no mention of it anywhere. They're blocking, there, there's no personnel of the, the people on site. My suggestion to the town, and I know I'm running out of time here.
Yes.
Has a proper road assessment been done of these roads? Also, the bonds for the construction of these properties, the city is requiring only $10,000. You go to the city of San Anselmo, the city of San Rafael, or the county of Napa, it's 20, 30% of the project. It holds these general contractors more responsible instead of them just being cut loose. And we don't have the resources to manage them properly or oversee the project. It's a serious concern. These other jurisdictions are here to help. And if they, we reach out of the town, they can help guide us because.
Thank you, Jane.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry I'm going on. It's a topic of concern for the residents and neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Director is listening. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jeffrey Bolt. And you're unmuted now.
Hi, this is actually Linda Bolt, and I'm using my husband's computer, but I'm a Cascade resident. And thank you for this time tonight. I've sent an email to Bruce and Stephanie updating them with the progress. A group of Concerned Stewards of the Elliott Nature Preserve have made regarding a request from Fairfax Open Space Committee to connect with, and communicate with the Marin Bicycle Coalition and Access for Bikes. I just wanted to share some of those points we discussed at the meetings, at this meeting tonight. I personally was able to hike with the group that met with Vern Huffman for a walk with him and his lovely wife. But I was out of town for the walk with Tom Boss. But I did, however, follow up with Tom regarding the issues and discussions. To reiterate, our main concern is maintaining and supporting the health and welfare of the Elliott Nature Preserve and its inhabitants. Right now, the results of issues from poor maintenance, lack of restoration, and lack of enforcement for policy and safety issues for people and nature, and continued use of illegally deemed trails seem to be the glaring problems. Neither MCBC or A for B are able to enforce or assure their groups can follow rules, policies, or even act civil, although both can work on measuring, as, on measuring, I'm sorry, messaging through their grant, social media, websites, and education. We're looking for an end of encroachment of non-sanctioned trails, as well as any active or destructive activity within the Elliott Nature Preserve. The overall care of the nature preserve is in the hands of the Marin County Parks, who are responsible for ensuring policy and maintenance is executed properly. Rather than the Elliott Nature Preserve users pointing fingers at each other, we would like us all to work together to hold MCP and MLS responsible for caring for the sustainability of our precious natural resources. The folks working together right now to protect the integrity of the Elliott Nature Preserve are individuals. We're passionate people who know and respect the ENT. We're not an organization. So we look to the appropriate leaders from these organizations, such as Marin County Parks and Marin County Open Space. Again, I'd like to remind the council that we're asking the town of Fairfax to join us and rally to define, defend, protect, and stand up for this beautiful preserve that's located in the town of Fairfax. And finally, please visit our website, elliatnaturepreserve.org, where you can also see the recent photo of the mountain lion that was on one of the trails of the preserve. And thank you again for all you do for supporting our work to keep the Elliott Nature Preserve a vibrant, healthy, safe preserve for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tuna Fish Salin. I have unmuted you now.
Okay, there we go. Hi, everybody. Good afternoon morning. Beautiful day. Town picnic's coming up, and I just wanted to put out there that I used to do something, which I called In and Out as the Box, which was a bunch of cardboard boxes and painting. And I just wanted people to be aware that that's no longer happening. And I want to put it out there, just, you know, what kind of town and what kind of community do we want to have? Personally, I think that, you know, life is messy, art is messy, fun is messy. And the box painting was basically banned because some of the paint was getting on the water slide because people would come and paint and then maybe go over to the water slide. And instead of perhaps having a wash-off pool or something else, it was much easier just to ban the box painting, which is all fine and good. But I just look at the world and see how it's kind of all the same. We have 7-11s and Costcos, and everything is made in China, so to speak. And wherever you go in the world, it's all the same. And there's very little creativity or things that aren't made in China, so to speak. So I'm just getting at, what kind of life do we want? What kind of community do we want? And do we want everything to just be clean and tidy and fit into the box? Or perhaps maybe we should have something like the box painting, which is a little messy and a little out of control. And maybe it's, you know, not just the same old, same old. And, you know, we'll see what happens. Let's see, let me see some other stuff. I saw some signs in Perry Parks the other day, basically, no one, you know, over the age of seven or something without an adult allowed. I just don't think we need signs like that at all in our town, especially at the park, which is, what, 200 feet from the police department if there is ever a problem. I mean, I've known over the years, lots of adolescents have gone in there and played. You know, it's not just for young children. I don't think we need signs that are exclusionary and keeping people out. And I heard someone talking about, you know, cars and air quality and electric cars and whatnot. And I don't think that we all need a Tesla and a green wall. I don't think there's resources for us all to have that. And when you get right down to it, what do the, all the fires do for the air quality? And perhaps we just need to consume less. And can we be satisfied with what we have? Or do we have to buy more stuff and, you know, made in China? Or, you know, maybe have some recycled cardboard that we paint and have a good time with? I don't know. It's all pretty interesting, confusing, and what a beautiful life. It's all an adventure, huh? Let's have some fun with it, and let's play. And hopefully, it's not just as a box, in the box, but in and out and all around. And, you know, let's be creative. Have a good evening, folks.
Okay, we have room for, we have time for two more speakers, and then we will continue the comment on items not on the agenda at the end of the meeting if people want to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The next speaker is John, I believe. And you're unmuted now.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. I hate to call and like, you know, harp on something, but you know what they say, if you see something, say something. And I'd just like to remind the town people who are listening of what Jane was alluding to earlier. This is not about Agenda Item 19, by the way. So what had happened was during a joint council meeting with the Res J, while Jane was exercising her constitutionally protected right of free speech, Veronica Garretts held up a sign, I guess perhaps you could say in protest, that read, "Read white fragility." That's like harassment, in my view. It's just uncalled for. And I want to pose this to the council. You know, if we were back in the days, we were at the Women's Club and the Women's Building, and we were all sitting around and we were doing normal meetings, would any of you ever, ever, ever hold up a sign while somebody was talking? I don't think you would. And you know why? It's because I have confidence that you wouldn't. What I don't have is confidence that Ms. Garretts or Garretts can make any decision, can make any decision correct or right for the town. She does not represent my views. And I think that there are some issues there, and they are basically a one-way view. And so I'd ask that you ask that she resign. Thank you.
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes.
May, may I just make, make a request? And my request would be looking back at the meeting protocols. I, I feel, I feel regardless of my personal feelings here, and I would say this in, in any situation, that I would appreciate the public or council not calling out members of the public's names on items where there is disagreement or discord. It feels to me that it would make someone or groups of people on either side of any issue feel uncomfortable. Our goal here is inclusion. And so I would appreciate that that be handled outside of the public meeting setting so that everybody feels as though they're being heard, regardless of any pain caused in, in any direction. So that would be my request.
I appreciate that. Yes. And yeah, I think we, we keep hearing about this one thing over and over. I know it was disturbing to some people, and other things that have been said have been disturbing to many people. And we need to somehow get beyond it. And I will say I have met with Veronica Garretts about that issue. And I have also met with at least one of the speakers tonight about that issue. So I would like to see us move on and try to have a conversation about things that are important to us and important to many other people who aren't speaking on this meeting, and try to do so in a civil way. So thank you, Renee, for bringing that up. Okay. Yes.
Mayor, I was just hoping we could do a chime check so we stay on track with the 30 minutes.
We are two minutes away right now from the 30 minutes that we gave the public comment. So I said that we would have two more speakers. Let's have that one more speaker right now, and then that's it until the end of the meeting. And we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. So Michelle, if you'll call on one more person, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The next speaker is Deborah Benson. I have unmuted you now, Deborah.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, council, for hearing me. First of all, I would like to speak on this, being the last speaker in open time. I don't know how many interested individuals attend council meetings in other towns. But as you all know, we are a really attentive town and have a lot of people who are really interested in, in attending. And because of the long nature of the meetings and the long agendas, 19 items on this agenda, oftentimes, our population is unable to speak on the agenda items because they have to work the next morning, they get sleepy, they go to bed. So let's see how this goes. But I think that this is muting our ability to be involved in, in our government. So I really don't think it's a good thing. But let's give it a chance and see. I, I point to the beginning of the meeting where you announced that everyone is not to ridicule members of the staff, the council, or the public. And I agree that the action of a person, who I will not name, while a member of the public was speaking, is, is reprehensible, and that person should not be allowed to, to be on a committee. I wanted to speak about the sycamore trees on Cascade Drive. Today, Fire Safe Marin was here, looking at properties. And this year, for the first time in 29 years I'm here, the sycamores are just popping bark. They do that. I've done some research. They do that in order to, to protect themselves against insects. They have very smooth bark. And in the summertime to grow, they pop bark. But they're doing it at an unprecedented rate. So the sycamore trees, to my knowledge, are owned not by the town or not the responsibility of the town, but of the relatives, the descendants of the old man who I heard planted them long, long ago. And the sycamore bark is, 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 it's very flammable. And I'm wondering if the town is going to take any part in cleaning along Cascade Drive, perhaps outside of the fences and the property lines of our properties to try to help us to clean up this sycamore bark? to try to help us to clean up this sycamore bark this year. The sycamores are lovely. They're, they're a beloved tree. They provide a lot of shade and, and habitat. And, and we love them, but, but this year they're just popping that bark like crazy. So I'm wondering if perhaps we could get some help in keeping, keeping that, that evacuation route clean. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for that heads up, Deborah. And we will continue if people would like to continue speaking on items not on the agenda at the end of the meeting. But I appreciate, Deborah, your willingness to give this a try. Something has to be later in order for something else to be earlier. So we're trying something new and, uh, it sounds like it might actually help. So moving along then quickly to the, uh, consent calendar, that would be the next item on our agenda. We have, uh, a number of items on it. If there is any, if there are any questions, clarifying questions from the council or things that we might need to pull from the consent calendar? And seeing, uh, Councilmember Goddard.
Yeah, I didn't want to pull anything, but I, um, I, I did want to make a few comments on item number 12. And I could do that after, um, public comment or?
Okay, yeah, if it's, if it's not something that needs to be before public comment, let's go to that. Okay. Anything else before public comment? Clarification? Okay. So if we can go to public comment on any items on the consent calendar. Michelle, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so we have one hand raised right now for consent, but it was the same hand that was raised from, from open time. I'm not sure if he wants to speak or not, but I will unmute you, Mark Bell. You're unmuted.
Hello, Mark. Um, you're still muted. Maybe Mark is not actually there at this moment.
Yeah, Mark, if, if you don't want to speak, um.
Let's, let's move on then because we, uh, it, it appears that maybe Mark left the room after his hand was up before. Okay, so, uh, Councilmember Goddard, you, you had a comment on item 12?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, just, just a few things. I just wanted to acknowledge this, um, this, this, uh, climate action report from, um, this past year. You know, with gratitude and also with, um, real appreciation for having, uh, some of these, a, a good number of these goals accomplished. Um, these were a long time in coming and very, um, you know, the, the, the goals are what, you know, are, are required for us to, uh, to move forward toward our, um, resolution. And so just a couple pieces I wanted to, sorry, not feeling very articulate, but a couple pieces and a couple of the goals I wanted to speak to really briefly and that, because of the fact that actually tonight, we are addressing some of those goals that were not able to be accomplished during this past year. So just wanted to point them out really quickly. And one is, um, uh, starting with goal, 5.1, and that is that the Climate Action Plan Update was completed and, um, adopted. And, uh, and that is not, didn't take place at time of reporting. So to acknowledge that and the, uh, hard work, the extraordinary hard work of the Climate Action Committee and their subcommittee, that goal has been accomplished. Um, the next goal was goal 6.2, which is the all-electric goal. Um, also being taken up tonight for consideration after a long process and much assistance from the Climate Action Committee. So let's see where we go with that tonight. Thank you for teeing it up. Um, and then, uh, climate goal 6.4, I wanted to just make a comment. I did some homework about new vehicles, even gas fossil fuel powered vehicles and the start-stop engine. Goal 6.4 is about vehicle idling. It, it's very positive news and all new cars, um, from what I can understand, do have the start-stop engine. Meaning when you stop at a stop sign, when you push the brake at a stop sign and it stops, there is no idling. So there are no emissions coming from those, um, from those vehicles. So when you see a lineup of cars at a child's school for pickup, most of those cars and soon to be all of those cars, electric or not, um, will not be idling, um, and emitting. And lastly, uh, goal 6.5, um, and that's the phasing out of fossil fuel powered burning yard equipment. And, uh, we are writing a letter in support, um, we will be considering it tonight of, uh, AB 1346, which is the phasing out of, um, fossil fuel, uh, powered burning yard equipment and off-road engines. So, um, I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work and I wanted to, um, just make public, that the Climate Action Committee is being heard and slowly we are moving toward our goals. And also Walt, I know you're not on the call as far as I can see, but your blog is fabulous and keeps us up to date and so personable and, um, informative and we appreciate all the work.
Thank you. Councilmember Kohler?
Yeah, I have, um, just three comments. One is on item five. I want to thank Susan Pascal-Bouron for stepping up, uh, to re-up for a second term on the Open Space Committee. She served as chair very ably and I'm sure most of you know she's also one of our artists in residences. And I also was able to get her, uh, the artsy on the Community Media Center of Marin. And she's been a real asset on that, also adding to our diversity. For number seven, which is a side letter for the, oh, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. Number nine, uh, the resolution for the management confidential and part-time employees that just want to remind us that we received a supplement. So if we do go forward to approve, we have to mention that. And then the last thing, I want to also say something on item 12. And I did bring this to Walt Vernon, our chair's attention. One of the things that's missing is the Climate Action Committee received the annual award of MCE's Charles F. McGlashan's Annual Advocacy Award with two others for all their hard work. And some of that is Mayor Ackerman's work on the, what we will soon see as a microgrid in our pavilion, hopefully as that project moves forward. But also just the work to get, uh, folks to sign up for Deep Green and just a lot of work. And I pushed for that pretty hard because there's been so much work and I sat on that committee for three years. And I will tell you, uh, everybody always stepped up to volunteer on that group for tabling and whatever. Um, that doesn't always happen in groups, but, um, it's a good group. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Councilmember Cutrano?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I, I just wanted to, um, second that appreciation for, um, Susan Pascal-Bouron as the, as the Open Space Liaison. And I also wanted to note, given that there are so many plugs for item 12, for the Climate Action Committee's annual report, just that that item, um, 4.1, the goal of getting to a, a higher amount of, uh, deep green participation, 100% renewable energy with MCE, it is one of the easiest things folks can do to fight climate change. Uh, and it's as easy as going to mcecleanenergy.org and there's a three-step process of just putting in some information and opting up. I think it's like the price of a cup of coffee per month to opt up to 100% renewable energy from solar and wind that's generated here in California. So I just wanted to plug that as we, uh, you know, continue to, or as we aspire to reach that goal this year coming out of the pandemic. So, thank you.
And just one thing to add, Councilmember Cutrano, it's $5 more a month than light green, so it's not very much for most folks. And also to remind everyone that of the 37 jurisdictions in MCE, we still have the highest deep green signups at 8.6% of all jurisdictions. And we're all over in four counties. So thanks to the hard work.
Thank you. And I certainly second what Chance says. That is one of the easiest actions you can take. And there, there are other advantages to being part of MCE as well. If you have solar, you get a, a better deal on your solar net metering. They are easier to work with. It's a fantastic organization and we are really, uh, lucky and we can also be proud of ourselves for creating that, that organization here in this county. Okay, anything else? If not, could I get a motion to approve the consent calendar? And that would, uh, as a reminder, we've got the supplement to item nine and we also had a very small but critical amendment to the, uh, greenhouse gas inventory that, or is that on consent or is that, uh?
On consent, uh, Mayor, I would like to make that motion to approve the consent calendar with the supplement to item nine and also the change, the minor change to page four on item 13. Thank you.
Motion?
A second.
And a second from Renee. Uh, Michelle, would you take a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Cutrano?
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler?
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard? Vice Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
And Mayor Ackerman?
Yes. And we are exactly 12 minutes behind, so this is actually pretty amazing. We can do this. Fairfax can do this. The next item on the agenda is continued as it has been for many months. So we now move to item 16 on the regular agenda, which is to receive the fiscal year 2019 to 2020, that's one year ago, audit report. And, uh, I believe our finance director, Michael Vilevet, Vilevet, will be giving us.
Yes, thank you.
Am I getting that right?
Vive Ret.
Okay.
Number five and Ret Butler.
Okay. Starts with a number. Okay.
Starts with a number, yes. So, uh, I've got a, uh, PowerPoint presentation that goes along with this and, uh, I'm hoping that, uh, Michelle might have that lined up to be able to go up and share.
Yes.
Oh my God, look at that.
It's not quite right. Hang on.
Okay, that's, that's perfect. No, that looks good. Okay, well, I, I am pleased for the first time in many years to be able to actually present the, uh, audit to you and be able to have a PowerPoint up that actually, uh, shows some of the key highlights of what we've done here. So next slide. Uh, this, this item, uh, calls for just to have you receive, receive it. There's no motion or resolution that goes along with this. So, uh, next slide. Um, our audit is done every year. This is an annual audit. Uh, we've, uh, we use Mays and Associates, which is a company that seems to specialize in governmental audits. The audit usually takes about two weeks of field work. This year because of COVID, they, uh, were, did most of their, uh, work remotely and we shared our documents with them and, and, uh, worked with them, uh, outside of the office. So, uh, we, we did it in two parts. One week of it was done in July, which dealt with our internal controls. And the second week, which dealt with our year-end numbers, uh, was done in January of, uh, this year. This, this audit that we're looking at is, is for the previous fiscal year, previous to what we just, just finished with this year. So this is a year-old information. Basically, the audit, uh, came through as being clean, which means that it, uh, there, they didn't find any material misstatements in the, uh, audit. Their actual opinion is, is shown here. We found that, uh, using very several key, uh, metrics, that the town fared better than it had expected to. You'll remember when we went into our budget, uh, that, uh, we projected we were going to have a decrease in fund balance of about $228,000. We actually had an increase in, uh, fund balance, uh, of $616,000. So that was, uh, a result that we didn't expect when we did our budget. Uh, the actual revenues for all the funds increased by about seven and a half or 7.2%, mostly due to, uh, better than expected sales tax and, and, uh, good property tax receipts. Our expenditures were less than what we expected by about 2.2%. Next slide. So looking at, looking at this, our fund balance increased by, in the general fund, by about $387,000. That's, uh, about 8.9% increase in the fund balance. And for all funds, they increased by $337,000, which is about a 6.7% increase in total. Next slide, please. Our revenues, uh, in comparison to what we had in the prior fiscal year, which was 1819, in the prior fiscal year, we had 9,077,000. And in fiscal 1920, we had 9.7, uh, million. So that was a higher by 651,000 or about an increase of 7.2%. All revenues for the, uh, for all funds increased by about 850,000, also 7.2%. Next slide, please. Uh, on the expenditure side, the, in comparison to the previous fiscal year, uh, our general fund expenditures increased by 4.7%. However, for all funds, expenditures were less than the previous fiscal year by about 273,000, mostly because we didn't spend as much in capital improvements as we had the year before. So the next slide. Uh, as far as other things that are of interest in the audit, and believe me, it's all interesting. I say this for the benefit of Vicky Rodriguez, who's from Mays Associates who's listening in. And she would, uh, greatly enjoy that, that we all read the entire audit from start to finish and, uh, fully understand this and it's, my talk is somewhat redundant. For OPEB, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits, they decreased this last year by $214,000 or about 14.9%, mostly due to the contributions that the town made. We make, uh, $100,000 or some years we do 120,000 towards, uh, our CERBT fund, which, uh, holds money for payment of, uh, retiree health benefits. Also, our plan, that CERBT fund earned about $162,000 this last year, uh, which was, uh, a, a big help in reducing our total, uh, net liability. And then also some of the actions that the town took in reducing and eliminating uh, benefits for employees hired after July 1st, 2013, uh, kicked in. As far as the PERS or pension liability went, that increased from the prior year by about $760,000. Uh, but I put a note in here that, that the, uh, refinance that we did of the PERS liability in September of 2020 is not reflected in that total. And so though, even though the, the PERS went up by 760,000, we had a savings from that refinance of about 4.2 million, which, uh, which means that this next year, when we present the audit, uh, we'll have, uh, we'll have a, uh, probably a decrease in the pension liability rather than an increase that's shown here. So next slide. So, uh, that's sort of the highlights of the audit for this year. As I mentioned, uh, we have Vicky Rodriguez of Mays and Associates, uh, on here. So if you have any questions that you might, uh, have, you can either address them to me or to Vicky. And hopefully we'll be able to answer them for you.
Thank you, Michael. Councilmember Kohler, you had a question for Vicky or for Mike?
Actually, I have a question for Michael and a big thanks to Michael and Garrett Toy for really continuing to keep us in good shape, uh, with the council's assistance and with Mays doing such a great job. Seems like every year. You know, I'm always interested in, uh, what that refi did for us for our pension liability. The 4.28 million is a savings over some years. That's correct. Is that right?
It's, it is over the life of the, uh, debt. So I'd say 20 years or approximately.
Okay, excellent. Um, so just want to thank you. As you know, I read every word and I gave you a few. And I gave you a few little comments, but it's excellent, as always. And thank you, Vicky, for working with your team. Just, it's always refreshing to see we're always in good shape. Thank you.
Councilmember Hellman, or Vice Mayor Hellman.
I, I also, you and I exchanged, and I appreciate your responses to my emails. And I read it end to end. It's, but first and foremost, I just want to thank you and congratulate you on a clean audit. It sounds like Vicky and Mays are great to work with, but I know they can be stressful undertakings, having been through several myself. So, thank you on behalf of the council and, and the town. I, I found this audit report to be very readable. And I think, you know, one of the recommendations I had, as you know, was to share it with new council members, because there's just so much good information in there, including, you know, on page forty-nine, there's a list of the JPAs that we participate on. And I found that, this is not financial, but the detail level of accomplishments of the council was actually, I found to be better than the one that we've published in the past as a council. And so I think that's good for the public to see as well. The only other question that you answered for me, and I don't know, was around the, the deferred inflows and outflows. And you satisfied my question there, so I don't know that we need to. Yes, yes, I don't know that we need to go, go over it, but thank you so much.
All right. And I also will really express my appreciation to Michael for his ongoing incredible care and, and, and just transparency and ease to, to talk with and to be able to understand this. I always feel like our town finances are in very good hands. And thank you, Vicky, and all of you at Mays Associates. We, we do use your services. I'm sorry, my phone is ringing. We'll ignore it. We use your services every year for, for good reason, so thank you very much. Okay, if we should go to public comment and see if there's any, any comment on this item from the public. Can we do that, Michelle?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on the audit, please raise your hand. And I'm not seeing any public comment.
We'll, we'll bring it back. And again, thank you. We, their only item tonight is to receive this report. And thank you for the presentation and good work.
Great. Thank you.
And continue to prosper.
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate to ask Michael if we could post his presentation on the finance page with the audit? I think it was great to hear Mike actually do a presentation for us. And I think it, it brought out some of the high points. So you, you can think about that, if that makes sense, for the finance page with the audit.
Okay, maybe, maybe I would, I would leave that to between Michael and town manager, Adam. We, I believe, are going to be having, we're going to try out having more of these PowerPoints, short PowerPoints as parts of, of staff reports on things to just make things clear. And so that's a good question, how we post them. Maybe they would go onto the website along with the, the recording. But we'll leave that to staff to consider.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, just to respond to Councilmember Kohler's comment there. All of tonight's presentations, PowerPoint presentations, will be uploaded onto the website. And so as we go forward, you will see brief PowerPoint presentations as part of staff reports. Just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And so we are now going to move on to the next item, item seventeen. And we're still on schedule. So for the staff report on that, the town manager can start out. And Adam, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor and council members. I will ask Michelle to bring up our, our presentation on this very brief but very important update to the council and to the community on the recruitment of the town manager and, and a request of staff or council to appoint a ad hoc subcommittee of two council members to work with staff, our town clerk and myself, and Heather Rensler, who is the president and CEO of Ralph Anderson Associates. And Heather is with us tonight. We're going to co-present tonight's agenda or staff report. And so as you see here, you're going to receive a recruitment update from Heather on the timeline and the process. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about the appointment that we are requesting from the council to work with staff here as an ad hoc subcommittee. Next slide, please. So as a reminder to the community, on July 7th, the town council approved an agreement with Ralph Anderson and Associates for services for the town manager, recruitment services for the town manager. Now, that's a fixed fee for the town manager recruitment services at the cost of $26,500. We have started conversations with Heather since I've been here and probably a little bit prior to that, when town manager Toy was, was still the town manager. I know that he and Heather obviously had conversations as well. And, and, and so we are well underway to start, start this process. So tonight, my request, and I'll go to the next slide, please. Oh, maybe not go back, sorry. I thought I had another slide there, but that's, that's fine. Just back here. Yeah, thank you. So, so my request tonight is that the council appoint two members to serve on the ad hoc committee. The primary need for this is that we need to move quickly, working with Heather, so that we can bring forward the recruitment material, including the brochure and any other related material to the council for your approval at your September 1st council meeting. So it's important that staff and Heather and, and, and the town clerk and I are able to bounce ideas off of two council members and make sure we're going in the right direction, receive their feedback. So when we show up on the first, we have a good sense that we're going in the right way, going in the right direction. I will tell you this, from working with Ralph Anderson and Associates before and with Heather directly, they, they know what they're doing. They'll put together very professional and polished material, but really getting an understanding of some of the unique assets of our community here, things that we want to call attention to, to our candidates. I think working with the committee would be helpful. When we appear on the September 1st council meeting, we want the brochure to be, you know, at that 75%, 85% completion point, so that we get any additional recommendations or additions to it at that meeting, so that we can move forward with, with the consent of the council to publish the brochure and the other recruitment material to kick off the, the actual recruitment and start attracting qualified and exciting candidates for, for this position of town manager. So that's the action at the end of the night that we are requesting, obviously, at the end of the meeting or end of the item, if there are questions specifically about the ad hoc committee. Both myself, Michelle, and Heather, you know, obviously get the answer to it. I'm going to now turn it over and reintroduce you to Heather Rensler from Ralph Anderson Associates. And she's going to walk through some of the highlights of the timeline. It's not everything that was, go to the next slide, please. It's not everything that was in the staff report. It's just really picking out the key, the key dates here. But if you have questions on any of the other events or dates that was in the staff report, Heather is, is available to answer those questions as well. I'll turn it over to Heather.
Good evening, council. I do appreciate being here this evening to meet with you all and to go over briefly our timetable. As Adam mentioned, we would like to be able to bring back on September 1st, a completed, almost completed brochure for final approval. So that would basically then allow us to open the search on September 7th, or perhaps earlier, if we have just minor modifications. That application period, we're suggesting a six-week application period. One of the things during that timeframe, I just want to bring to the council's attention, the League of California Cities Conference, if it continues to be an onsite event, is at Sacramento Convention Center. And that's September 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. So that, that's also a very good time for us to personally be able to meet and be introduced to candidates there. We do intend to close the search on October 18th. And I would be giving you a status update very shortly thereafter to review those applicants. And we do that in a closed session environment. We do that to protect the confidentiality of the candidates. Going further on, we typically, at this level, will have two rounds of interviews. First round may be done via Zoom. But the second round, we do encourage in-person meetings with the candidates. Your negotiations with the candidates would then follow, including any backgrounds. And we would anticipate some carryover with your interim town manager. What I'd also like to be able to suggest to the council is that I would like to open up an email that would come directly to my office that would be available for public input, should they wish to make comments on attributes, topics of consideration, perhaps opportunities to enhance certain services or anything that they feel would be important for the new town manager to be aware of. I will have that up and available as of Monday. And that would be privately sent to my office. We would also encourage just that dialogue if individuals in the public wanted to make suggestions for advanced interview questions or anything of that nature. I would be reading and reviewing that and then working with your town manager and the working group to blend together those items for, for your review on September 1st. I do want to mention, it's a very competitive environment right now. And as you may be aware, there's other searches open or going to be open soon. So it is imperative that we get kind of off the mark on this fairly soon. As you know, we'll be hitting some holidays later in the year. So we want to make sure we, we structure this and stay on target and on task. But I'm available if you have any questions currently, or certainly as a follow-up.
Next slide, please, Michelle. So again, a reminder, just asking for council to name, by name, I'm sorry, appoint two members by name to the ad hoc subcommittee. And both Heather and I are here to answer any questions, either about the timeline or about the work of the supplement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Okay, so we bring that back to council. And I guess the next step would be to receive public comment on this. And then unless there are any clarifying questions from council, Councilmember Goddard.
I think we all have questions.
Okay, yes.
I have several, but I want to start with a very basic one. So, Adam, and nice to meet you, Heather. Thank you for being here. Adam, reading the staff report under discussion, you list that this is recruitment services for town manager and public works director. Could you just tell me, as a point of process, are we doing it simultaneously? Because I know we're working with Heather through both processes. Are we focusing tonight only on the process of appointing the ad hoc committee for town manager?
A great question. Yes, when I wrote the staff report, I thought it was important in the staff report to just remind the community and the council that the contract that was approved by council on the 7th was for recruitment for both the town manager and the public works director. The direction that, that Heather and I are recommending to the council is that we lead off with the town manager recruitment. And then at a certain point here this fall, kick off the recruitment for the public works director position, so that we can get to the finalists in an ideal situation. And the new town manager is in position to hire the finalist. So ideally, that happens sometime in January and February, if, if we have a strong pool of candidates. And that's the other reason why having Jonathan Goldman serve as our interim public works director and have that lag a little bit into the new year will also help with that transition, just as Heather shared, with the transition between the interim town manager and the appointment of the new manager.
Okay, thank you so much. And then I did want to ask my other question. And that is, I'm looking at the timeline. And I, I just wanted to get really clear on how the other three council members will actually participate through this process, should the ad hoc subcommittee be appointed? Only because there are so many phases and we've got the two interview opportunities. Are you seeing that the two that are appointed would take it through the whole way? Or would there be an opportunity to have another council member sit on one of the, of either the video or the in-person interviews to change it up a little bit, once you've had your advisory work, the initial work? I just, you know, want to make the best choice, but I, it's, it, I want, I want to make a choice that doesn't preclude me from, or exclude anyone else from the process.
Heather, why don't I kick this off, and then I'm going to hand it to you to get a little more into the, into the details here. But the, the, the intent is that every council meeting between now and the appointment of the town manager is we'll have a public item and a closed session item. So we'll provide an update in public, not releasing any confidential information, but sharing that we have, you know, a pool of 120 applicants, you know, or, you know, whatever. We'll, we'll provide some, some feedback, because the public is just as invested in the outcome of this, of this process as each of you are. So we want to make sure that there is a, a public process, keeping the community informed as best we can. And then obviously, as Heather described, there's, we have to keep the applications confidential. So unfortunately, we won't share that. The other piece of this that's really important is that the, the committee will not be interviewing candidates. The council will be interviewing candidates, the entire council. As a former, you know, city manager for 13 years, I want to know who I'm working for. I want to know, I want to see you and hear your questions. And I want to have a conversation with you during this interview process, because it's a two-way street. You may be picking me, but I also have to pick you. I, I'm embarrassed to, to admit this, but my daughter loves watching The Bachelor and The Bachelorette. And when you hand out the roads, someone has to say, I accept it. And so you guys will be handing out the roads at the end of this process. And we sure want to make sure that that person accepts it. So Heather, why don't I turn it to you, if you want to go into a little bit more, you know, of the process from Councilmember Goddard's question?
Adam, thank you very much. That was very much on point. As your consultant on the search, I do want every member of the council engaged in the interview process. And as Adam mentioned, candidates want that and expect that as well. So using the working committee to get the brochure up and going, that certainly, I think, is valid. It will come back to the full council for review. But once we begin talking about individuals' names, looking at resumes, career path, those applicants, that will be with the entire council in an executive closed session. So, um, you'll stay with that process all the way through, and we together, uh, will work through, um, narrowing the, the list down. Um, I'll be with you when you do the interviews. Uh, I will help craft the interview questions. I'm hoping we get some contributions from the public as well, too, that we can filter through, uh, that we would use in our closed session. Sometimes we also have candidates submit sample written reports, and also, uh, at times, they've done PowerPoint presentations of how they're going to transition into the organization. So you will be actively engaged, and I will be your consultant from start to finish on that. And so together, including, um, involvement from your interim Town Manager, uh, we'll be shepherding the entire council through the process.
Wow, thank you for your very thorough explanation. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Um, council member caller?
Sorry, I have a couple of simple questions. One is, I'm not sure that I heard the answer. Is the Ad Hoc, uh, I'll just say all my questions at first. Is the Ad Hoc Committee going to be, um, also working with the team, the Heather, Adam, Michelle team, on the Public Works Director brochure, et cetera? And then the second question is, um, well, first of all, I want to say, uh, thank you, Adam, for also talking about how the public will hear an update at almost every meeting. I think that's really important, uh, as well as involving all the council members. The other piece is, um, would the Ad Hoc Committee, I remember when, uh, Vice Mayor Hellman and I interviewed the various recruiting firms, and Heather, we talked about, uh, I'm guessing we might have some involvement in winnowing down the questions. And then also, would we have any involvement, whoever is on that Ad Hoc Committee, in, you know, let's say we get twenty applications, or thirty? Who knows? Well, would that Ad Hoc Committee have some involvement in winnowing those down to the most suitable group? So those are my three questions.
Thank you, Councilor Callar. Let me, uh, the, the first one's an easy one. Um, this Ad Hoc Committee will not be working on the Public Works Director recruitment. That's going to come later. We're focused on one thing right now, and that's the recruitment of the Town Manager. So that's what we're asking the Ad Hoc Committee to focus on. In terms of reviewing questions, um, providing feedback on the questions, um, that, that may be possible, but I want to assure the, the entire council needs to see all of the questions. So, uh, Heather will actually provide recommended questions, uh, because she's been doing this for a long time and has had great success. Uh, and as she mentioned, we will probably receive some questions from the public that they would like to have considered, and we will share all of the questions, um, with, with all five council members. The, the Ad Hoc Committee may make recommendations of a couple of questions that they think are important, and those would probably be the ones that come from the public, because I think the Ad Hoc Committee members will actually have a better sense of the public's questions than either Heather or I. But we, we, you know, we will both have some feedback on that. Uh, and then in terms of the, uh, winnowing down the, the applications, no, that's Heather's job. Uh, Heather will, will review all the applications. Uh, there is a very thorough process that she will go through in reviewing those, and she will recommend, if it's ten, twelve, whatever the, the magic number, what we'll interview. But you'll have an opportunity to see each and every single application that comes forward. And if there's some candidate in there that catches your eye, and you want to ask Heather a little bit more about that, we will do that, uh, as a group of five, and then Heather will m- make a case of, maybe we should include that candidate in the first round, or not. For, for whatever reason, uh, Heather will encourage one direction or the other. But, but no, we don't want the council, the committee, the Ad Hoc Committee, to be, uh, making those types of decisions. Um, you'll do that as a group, uh, and we don't want to show any bias or favoritism, uh, going into, into the, into the process.
Thank you, that's refreshing and helpful.
Um, Vice Mayor Hellman?
Thank you, um. I have a few questions, um, Heather, it's nice to see you again. Uh, thank you for being here. Um, so you mentioned, uh, the Cal Cities, uh, Conference. Um, obviously, you know, lots of public, um, employees attend. I wasn't aware that anyone outside attends, so I was a little curious about your comment on that. Do you, does your firm attend that conference, or?
Yes, yes. We, we go as an exhibitor, and we have done that for the last forty-eight years. So, um, as long as the conference, uh, goes ahead as planned, I do anticipate we may revert to, um, an e-conference, uh, because of the lingering issues with the pandemic. But we do have a presence there, and candidates that may want to have a private conversation, uh, may approach us in advance, or come to our booth.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I didn't, I don't, I didn't, anyway. Um, I really, uh, like the idea of the email that you shared for community members, um, to participate in the process this way, um, and just for their benefit. Can you just elaborate on how, did, was that, uh, is it anonymous, or how, how exactly does that work?
Uh, they come into our office, and I'll be setting up the email, and it will just be FairfaxSearch@ralphanderson.com, Anderson is S E N. And those will come into my staff, uh, and I will have access to them. And certainly, uh, the individual's email will be available to me. Um, but when I assemble the information, it will not be attributed to any one person. So that allows me to confirm that we received their information, and I may have reason to want to clarify something, or to invite, um, maybe, uh, a dialogue, because I need more clarity on that issue, so.
Thank you so much. Um, and then just, uh, expanding on what you both, uh, shared as far as the process and the role of the Ad Hoc versus the all five of us, um, if we could just get a little granular into the process, um. So, starting with the questions, so would it be, would you envision, um, Adam, I guess this question is for you, would you envision at an October meeting, the council would review and approve via an action item the actual interview questions? Uh, that's my first question on process. Is that how it would work?
Um, maybe. So what, what we're planning right now at the October twentieth council meeting, uh, that will be shortly after the, uh, process has closed on the eighteenth. The application process would close on the eighteenth. We would then give you an update in closed session on the actual applicants. Uh, and Heather will probably have the initial, uh, feedback on the, on the pool of candidates. And if we have a green light, where we have a really good, uh, pool of candidates, you know, then we will start developing, uh, the interview question. So again, just some of this is running in parallel, uh, and so I'll turn it to Heather. I, I don't quite know, um, if, if it's a, uh, building block process, or a parallel process, or combination. About, Heather, do you want to comment on that?
I, I noted that the interviews start in early to mid-November, so that's, that's why I was getting a little granular with the timeline, Adam, just to make sure we can... Go ahead, Heather.
Yes, certainly, um, as we move through this, we oftentimes will have a dual track. And so as I'm beginning to develop those questions, if we're in a closed-session environment, and keep in mind, we don't want to have those questions discussed publicly, because then it's open to, um, candidates as well. So typically, uh, I'm focused on the candidate identification at the beginning, to get the resumes and the interest in. But as I'm talking to candidates, I'm formulating what I thi- think might be good questions. So typically, I will bring those along to the meeting when we're doing the review of applicants, to say, "Here is my reduced list that you should consider," and then allow council members to contribute more at that point. Sometimes during this process, we are setting up special closed-session meetings for additional follow-up that we might need. We might have a, um, we might have to have kind of a pre-interview, uh, workshop for the council to review those questions, to formulate what we want to, uh, drill down on. Maybe there's topics we want to, um, address. So those are things that are part of our working workshop that we're going to do as we move through this.
Okay, very helpful. Just final question. So let's say we do get, I don't know, twenty applications, applicants. Does the council, the full five of us, see those resumes, et cetera?
Yes.
In, in a group, or as they come in, and is it all, um, at the, at this first, at this initial closed session? Is that when we see them all together, or?
Ti- Typically, what will happen is, you, you retained me, so I can, um, categorize people, putting them into, uh, what I would call buckets. So you might have your top tier of applicants that I believe we should take a look at. It could potentially be your top ten, uh, you know, I, I, I tend to want to narrow it down for you as a council, based on maybe experience I've had with candidates, or what I'm seeing. Um, so you would potentially have three buckets. Your top tier, or your focus group, those that might be an alternate group that potentially we could draw from, and then the third group would be those that I do not believe meet your criteria, or are lacking the qualifications to move forward. Now, when I present that to you, depending, let's say all the applicants come in on the seventeenth of October. Then that, then, in that case, you may be looking at, uh, an alpha list, because everyone waited to the last minute. But if they're coming in throughout that application period, I can at least be categorizing them for you. And so you would use me to do that first cut. Typically, um, I like to give you those resumes electronically, uh, in maybe a confidential share file, so that you can, uh, view the lists and view the resumes electronically. And I'd like to have you do that if we can have some time before you have to be presented with it at your council meeting. So it might be, you're presented everything, but we realize you need time to digest it. So we would work in then an additional closed session, special meeting, just for the continued review of applicants.
Very helpful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Cutrone, did you have?
I, I think I've had my, my questions answered. Thank you, Heather.
As, as have I. Thank you for great questions and great answers.
You're welcome, yeah.
So I think now we would go to public comment. Here are the public's thoughts on this, and then come back to consider the creation of a two-person subcommittee. So, Michelle?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Okay. So if anyone has any comments from the public, this is the time to raise your hand and make them to the council. I see one raised hand. I am unmuting you. Richard?
Thank you, Goodie and Council. Um, I jotted a few notes here, so, um, I, I support the notion of the Ad Hoc Committee, but I was pleased to hear that, um, the full council will be able to, um, you know, be very involved for the majority of the process when you're getting into, you know, a sm- smaller list. I was also pleased to hear that you'll all have access to every single resume, potentially, if you wanted to, you know, um, because who knows what might jump out to one of you that, um, didn't, didn't, um, you know, didn't make the cut with the, um, search firm screening process. Um, I was also pleased to hear that there's an invitation to the public, um, to provide questions or, or input. And, um, one of the things that I would encourage the council to do is, you know, I think there are certain things that are unique to our town. I've commented on this before, um, and, um, I would encourage the council to convey to the search firm, um, things that may go beyond the normal kinds of resume qualifications and experience that would be looked for in this type of a role. Um, things that might be unique to us. Um, we all know that we have a, we have an active citizenry here. Things get contentious. There's, uh, divisions at times, and acrimony, and, and there's unique things to us. And so from my perspective, it's not just who has all the experience with writing grants and handling the various duties and things that, uh, Town Manager typically does. There's also the unique things about that, that get in alignment with our values here in town. And so to me, qualifications are also about that, whoever this person's, their values, and being a good fit for, uh, the unique things, and I think that the council especially is, is, is qualified to kind of call those out. And so I would encourage you all to, um, uh, to gi- give that input. I know, I think there was an invitation to, to, also to council to shape questions and, and note things, and I would encourage you all to really think about the things that might not be the, the more obvious ones. Um, and then, um, I don't know if we're supposed to chime in on, on who we would support for the two-person, uh, subcommittee, but I would voice my support for Councilmember Hellman and Councilmember Cutrone. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands raised at this time.
Okay. Thank you. We'll bring it back to council. And, um, council member caller?
Yeah, I'd like to volunteer for the Ad Hoc Committee to work with Heather, Adam, Michelle, and uh, whoever the other member is, if I'm selected. Thank you.
Um, coun- Vice Mayor Hellman?
I, I'd like to volunteer as well.
Okay. Are there any other council members who would like to volunteer, or have comments on that? Or would we like to, uh, chance?
I, I'm just expressing that I, I'd like to volunteer, but it also might be cleaner. I don't know how we, how we decide this, if there are three of us, so, um, I'm also happy to defer. But I am, I am, uh, definitely entrusted as well.
That's very helpful to know. So, and Renee?
Yeah, I, I, I was very interested in stepping up, but, um, having heard, um, the responses to my questions about how much council will be really integrally involved, and how we're also going to conduit, uh, for the public to be involved, um, I am very comfortable, um, with the two who have stepped up to form the Ad Hoc, should the rest of the council be pleased to appoint. Um, uh, I think it's a good mix. I think, uh, Barbara has a longstanding on the council, and, uh, Stephanie has a shorter, but, uh, newer vision and perspective, um, in this transition, so, um, I would, I would support the two that have stepped forward with knowing that, uh, we will be involved at every step.
Okay. Well, I, uh, I was also thinking that this would be something I'd be interested in, but I'm definitely not going to step forward, given the riches of the three who have stepped forward. So I, I think we're down to three, and we just need to figure out how that's going to work. I would, I would definitely support council member caller being on it, uh, because I just believe that, uh, that you, Barbara, have a great, you're, you're the, uh, you've been on the council- you've been on the council for a long time and you have followed the governments in many other jurisdictions very closely. I think that'll be really helpful in looking at this with that, with that broader perspective. And I'm just wondering how we sort out between Vice Mayor Hellman and Councilmember Cutrano. I think either of you would be absolutely excellent on it. The question is, who wants to do it?
I just want to say one thing. I think that with Heather and Adam's explanation of so much involvement of the entire council and also the closed sessions as well as the open session items at the council. I don't think, you know, anybody really is going to be left out. And as much as I completely admire and respect council member Cutrano, I think that it would be a good fit for Vice Mayor Hellman and I to work together again. We did work on the, helping select the recruitment firm. And so if, if people would be willing, I think we would make a good team on that. But I, I just was really refreshed to hear so much involvement by the entire council. So whatever it happens, I mean, I'll just go ahead and make the motion. Why not? And I would just make the motion to appoint myself and Vice Mayor Hellman to the ad hoc committee and also appreciate the comments of all of you and particularly council member Cutrano who is willing to defer.
I'll second.
Okay. So let's take that to a vote. Michelle, if you would, if you would do that, please.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Goddard?
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano?
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
And Mayor Ackerman?
And I'll vote yes. And I really appreciate it when we, when we vote, when we come to consensus on things, even though they're difficult decisions. Okay. And it certainly does seem as people have said that we are all going to have. And, and I, I also very much appreciate Heather, your presentation and the, the idea of having a, an email address that the public can weigh in on. So we'll all get a chance to be involved in this and may we, may we find an absolutely amazing new town manager. Okay. Thank you. And we are doing quite well here. I'm just looking at the schedule because that was, that was, I thought this was going to be challenging to keep up with, but we're actually doing pretty well. We were a little over time on that one compared to what it was expected, but we had a good discussion. So if we're ready to continue on, we've got item 18, which is the consideration of the all-electric ordinance for new construction, which has gone through the council before. Can we get a, a report? I believe that that was going to be Janet?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can everybody hear me?
Yes. Good evening, Janet.
Great. Thank you so much. I'm going to try to share screen and Michelle is prepared to back me up if technology's not with me. So let's see, share screen. And let's try this, share. Okay, now, how do I get that to? I think slideshow, isn't that it?
F, F5 button. There's a quick shortcut.
There you go. Look at that.
Yeah, isn't that great?
That's beautiful.
The whole world would be one year ahead if everybody knew about the F5 button.
Thank you, Bruce. I appreciate that. Okay, so a little background on this. If you remember all the way back to February, the town council considered a request from the CAC to require all new residential and commercial construction to be all-electric. And at the April 21st meeting, the council directed the staff to prepare an all-electric ordinance. And some of the provisions are that it applies only to new residential and commercial buildings and exempts commercial kitchens. And so we come forward to July 7th when it was on your agenda, but it was continued to tonight's meeting. So the ordinance is before you for first reading and it applies to building permit applications submitted on or after the effective date of the ordinance for newly constructed buildings. The effective date, as you can see down the bottom, is July 1st of next year. And that's to have a phase-in period so that people can plan for this and incorporate it into their plans. Newly constructed building is defined as a building that has never before been used or occupied for any purpose. So this does not apply to rehabs or remodels at all. Does not apply to portable propane appliances for outdoor cooking and heating. And it does require that all newly constructed buildings must be all-electric. So must use a permanent supply of electricity as the source of energy for all space heating, water heating, cooking appliances and clothes drying appliances. No natural gas infrastructure or propane plumbing can be installed in the building and those have sufficient electric capacity, wiring and conduit to facilitate full building electrification. There are some exceptions or exemptions. Natural gas infrastructure can be permitted if the applicant can demonstrate that they cannot meet the requirements of Title 24, the Building Efficiency Standards. And this is kind of a complicated technical exemption, but I think that it, we included it because it's included in some other ordinances and it's one that we don't want any conflict with. And we think that it would be more defensible to include this exemption in here. I think it's, it's difficult to demonstrate that you can't meet the requirements of Title 24 without natural gas infrastructure, but we, we include that. So there's no possibility of conflict with the California Energy Code. Doesn't apply to certain development projects like affordable housing. And there's an exemption for newly constructed buildings with a commercial kitchen, restaurant, other food service establishments. And then there's a public interest exemption and that's as determined by the town. So our recommendation tonight is that you read my title only and introduce this ordinance. One of the things that was of interest is where it's placed in the code. And I think I, I clarified with the council that it can be placed anywhere you'd like in the code, frankly. I thought it made more sense to put it in chapter 15 because if somebody's looking for requirements about construction, new construction, they're probably going to go to that chapter first and may or may not end up in the health and safety title. But we can put it anywhere you like. I think it makes better sense just from a logical organizational structure to put it in building. It doesn't at all mean that it's anything like a reach code. It doesn't mean that it's on the same cycle of adoption with the building codes, the, the uniform codes. You can have your own separate chapter in the title and it's, this is done under the town's police power authority. It is, it is not a reach code. So we anticipate if you introduce it tonight, that adoption, the second reading, would be at your September 1st council meeting. Because remember, adoption has to be at a regular meeting, can't be at a special meeting. I'm happy to take questions. Let me see if I can stop sharing there. Okay, good.
Very smooth.
Well, sometimes technology is with me and sometimes it's not.
So do we have any questions or clarifications from council before we take public input on this? And then we can discuss it further?
Yeah.
Oh, Chance?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. Thank you, Janet, for that explanation and for your ongoing explanations as this has built out over the last several months. I just had a quick question about the exception or the exemption for affordable housing. I just didn't know how, how that was defined. I know it, in the ordinance, it mentions a couple of particular government codes and some case law. And I guess I was just wondering, from an equity perspective, you know, we, we cite the health concerns of, you know, having natural gas indoors within the ordinance. And we talked, we've talked about it at prior meetings. And I'm just wondering, when you looked at other ordinances, you know, were they also citing this as an exemption? I just don't want to, you know, perpetuate certain health outcomes for particular populations like in affordable housing units, you know?
Right. Well, we were trying, we, yes, it is bound in other ordinances. So it's not something new or novel, but we were trying to stay in line with, you know, not placing a bunch of excessive requirements on affordable housing projects. I don't anticipate that it would be in any way more expensive to put an all-electric in the building to, to have the building be all-electric. I don't anticipate that being more expensive, but on the off-chance that people would say that that would hinder the affordability of units, there is an exemption there. I don't really know necessarily that people would avail themselves of that, but we wanted to place it in there. We can take it out if you like. It doesn't have to be in there. It's, it's up to the council. Yes. Councilmember Kohler?
I, I think councilmember Goddard had her hand up first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that.
It's hard to see sometimes.
Thank you, Barbara. It's just, it's a tag on to, to Chance's comment in terms of defining what's meant by an affordable housing development.
It's defined by the government code section that's listed. 65589.5.
Right. So I didn't look that up. I suppose I could.
Okay. No, it's, it's just a, a way of, of defining affordable housing. As you can see, we don't have it in the definitions. So we, it's pursuant to that code section, the definition.
Okay. I think it probably, I think it probably. Yeah, that would be great. I mean, I just think it would require just a little bit more conversation so that we're not making things more onerous or expensive, which we really aren't. But, but defining, you know, what that, what that really means so that, you know, it's clear when we're dealing with applicants.
Maybe we'll come back to that when we discuss it.
That sounds good.
Get public comment.
Great.
So councilmember Kohler?
Yeah, it's, it's more on the affordable housing, a question.
Yeah.
I'm asking if that means 100% affordable housing, which to me makes more sense. For example, if Victory Village was being built today and there was, you know, I checked with the county on this and nobody had an answer as to whether or not it was more expensive. And I tried to reach out to affordable housing folks. I did talk to somebody who's building a house, who's a builder, who says it can be more, it can cost more at times. But I think my question for you, Janet, is when you have that definition, it wasn't clear to me that it's 100% affordable. And I think that would be a nice addition if it's not clear. Because remember, you know, people can do 10% affordable, you know, and get density bonuses and all kinds of things. So is it, it wasn't clear to me from the definition that we're talking about 100% affordable. Could you answer that question? And to me, that would be my preference.
Well, I'm looking at this right now. This is the Housing Accountability Act, the new housing laws. So I'm looking to see if they have.
Well, I don't want to get into, I, I think we can talk about this later. But I think one of the things we, we want to avoid is having people having to look at five different other things so that it's clear. And if it is within that exemption, we could just add the word 100% affordable. That may just make it crystal clear, but we can, you know, you can look it up later.
Well, I can, I'm, I'm looking at it right now. And it has definitions within the section. So for example, housing for very low, lower or moderate income households means that either at least 20% of the total unit shall be sold or rented to lower income households or 100% of the unit shall be sold or rented to persons and families of moderate income. And then there are definitions that apply to all of these moderate or lower income or middle income. And housing units targeted for lower income households shall be made available at monthly housing costs that does not exceed 30% of 60% of area median income. So there are different, definitely, it's not all 100%. It's, it's definitely a range.
Okay. Well, thank you for looking that up. I suppose I'm getting into areas that are not questioned. So maybe we answer any other further questions and then go to public comment and then we can discuss it more.
Okay.
I like the idea of including something like that in there so that we're not looking at hindering these things.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll have some comments and things we might want to discuss. But as far as questions, are we ready for, go to public comment now? Okay. Let's go ahead and do that. Michelle, if you'll bring that in. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Time for public comment. Raise your hand if you have a public comment on this item. I will go to the first speaker. That is Walt and you're unmuted now.
Hello, Walt. Okay, hopefully you can hear me. So this is Walt Vernon, chairman of the Climate Action Committee of the Town of Fairfax. So I get five minutes, I suppose. Actually, I'm at a wedding at Lake Tahoe where I'm taking a break from dancing to speak to you. And interestingly enough, you know, we've been breathing the, the smoke from the wildfires here all week. This is a problem that is clearly urgent and it is a tide that is sweeping the state and increasingly the country. And I'm, I'm happy that the town council is moving in this direction. I want to thank you for that. I guess I would make a couple of comments and suggestions. The first, both, one relatively minor, one not so minor. The more minor one is, I would think about the effective date. I, I understand the need to provide warning, to, to provide notice to developers, to people designing houses. I would suggest that a January 1st, 2022 date would be sufficient. This is something we've been talking about for quite a while. And if I were you, I would at least consider that. The far more important thing that I wanted to suggest is that you not exempt low-income housing. There are plenty of studies out there, many of them I supplied earlier, we can supply them again, that looks at the affordability of this particular thing. And, and all-electric construction is less expensive than natural gas, particularly in our climate. You know, when, when builders say in some climates, it's more expensive, that typically has to do with where there's a high heating load. And, and here in our county, we don't experience that in the same way. So it, it, it is more economical. And, and the other issue is, you know, as we as a society make a transition away from burning methane and towards all renewable electric sources, which we must do, the burden of paying for the infrastructure falls increasingly on those who have it. And if we put it into our. And if we put it into our affordable housing units, those are the people who will bear the cost ultimately of operating and maintaining these systems over their life. And so I strongly, strongly, strongly urge you all to remove the exemption for affordable housing because it won't help them and it will hurt them. And that is not where we as a community want to be. So again, I want to thank you for this. I think it's an incredibly important thing. And I have to go, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Walt. Enjoy. And thank you for work on this. Michelle?
Hey. Yeah, sorry, I'm here. I'm having a multitasking back here behind the scenes. Okay. The next speaker is Peter, and you are unmuted now.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Well, I'm really glad to see this finally coming to fruition. This was one of the last things I was working on with the Climate Action Committee. And I'm really glad that this is coming forward. And I wanted to also thank Walt for helping spearhead this and do a lot of the research preliminarily. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot we cannot do as a town to address climate change. But I think this is probably the single most important thing we can do as a town moving forward because, you know, future construction, you know, lasts more than a lifetime. So it's great to put these standards in place. And it's certainly the place to put it, put it into place in terms of new construction. It's a win-win. We have safer buildings and I like the emphasis on the health and safety. It's also a big, it's a win for climate change because obviously it reduces greenhouse gases over the lifetime of the building. And ultimately, it's a win for the homeowner too because if you implement these improvements from the beginning, the return on investment is almost immediate. So there's huge cost savings over the life of the building. So for all those reasons, it's really, it's a great win. It's very elegantly written, too, very simple, straightforward, easy to follow. And in terms of the affordable housing part, I hear the concerns. And, you know, I don't know what the right answer is. Obviously, you know, some projects may think that they'll pencil out better if they don't have that extra expense. But I would also think though that if you have a long-term affordable housing project, that the lifetime cost and savings in terms of utility and maintenance and so forth would still accrue to the benefit of the developer and to the tenants to reduce costs overall. I think Chance makes a good point, too, that indoor air quality is also better and healthier without the gas burning appliances and the risk of carbon monoxide poisoning and so forth. So I think on the balance, if you look at the affordable housing exemption, I would consider the total cost of ownership, so to speak, over the lifetime of the building. And I would wager that it would probably come out actually saving money for the project developers. But that's a kind of a finer point. But I'm really glad that this is coming before the council and it's an opportunity to show some great climate leadership as well as make for safer buildings in Fairfax. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Good to hear from you.
Okay, the next speaker is Jody Tims, and you are unmuted now.
Good evening, council members again. Thank you very much for having this finally on the agenda. I'm really delighted to see it there. It's really not an area I know a huge amount about, but I can say I've listened to a number of speakers and webinars talking about it in general. I don't see a reason to have an exemption for affordable housing. Again, for health and safety reasons, as well as economic, at least from everything I've heard and read, which is not extensive by any means. But I was surprised to see that there. I understand the holding off on the date. I would love to see it a bit sooner than July of next year as well. If it could be March or, you know, sometime sooner. I don't know if it has to be on January or July, but that I would love to see it begin a little bit sooner. And then the placement of it in the code, all I know is that the different speakers I have heard have really strongly recommended that it be in the health and safety code rather than in the building code. And I can't explain that or, you know, I don't understand all the back, the information behind that. But that's just what I've heard, that it's more defensible and it's a better placement. So that's just my two cents on that. But I would take whatever you do with this and be really happy if it moves forward tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jody.
I see no further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back to council. Okay, Renee.
Well, this time I saw Barbara's hands, so go for it. And then I would have left.
All right.
Okay, so I want to thank everybody for all their work on this. And I have a couple of thoughts. I do like it in the building code. And I think that one of the things we need to do is make it easier for people to find all our regulations. And even though there may be some reason why people like it in the health, the health, whatever that section is, one of my goals since I've been on this council is to make things easier for people to find. And you don't need an expert to tell you where everything is. So it makes more sense if you're a builder to have everything in the building code. And I think we would also make sure that people wouldn't miss it and then get told at some point down in the process, oh, by the way, you forgot this, which maybe they've already drawn up their plans. I do like the effective date of July 1, 2022. I understand there's a sense of urgency, but I also know that people are probably planning projects. And that's not far off from now. So we're in August and that gives people enough time to plan for it. And as far as, one of the things that was spoken about by some of the commenters is I do have some natural gas. I don't use much power at all for anything. But natural gas currently is cheaper to pay the bill for. It definitely is a lot cheaper. So with affordable, so when people talk about the total cost, now, if we're looking at lifecycle costs and health costs, clearly, that's a different ballgame. But if we're talking about people in affordable housing projects paying an all-electric bill versus a bill that maybe has a combination. And I'm sure you guys know that we pay some of the highest costs in the nation for utilities. It's, maybe that's a good thing. But so to me, that worries me. And and then the other piece that was talked about was that it's definitely cheaper to put in just electric. I did talk to a builder from this area, so that's not a high heat load, who said it can be more expensive to just do one. And I don't understand the complexities of that. But I think to me, if we stayed with as currently written, we would have a really good starting point that maybe we build from on there as people get more used to it. So that's just my thoughts. And others may have completely different thoughts, but just wanted to share those. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay. Renee, are you next? I was writing and I didn't see the order that hands came up, so my apologies.
Well, actually.
Writing while we get public comment.
My question and concern was exactly what Barbara just raised. And so I would like to understand it a little bit more in terms of electricity generation. And, you know, we have no mandate that people must install and be be, you know, deep green in all of their electricity generation. So we don't have those regulations in place, which seems to me that if we're looking at infrastructure, we have to make sure that everything that's generated is coming from renewable sources. And so the cost of, and this is what I'm dealing with, like personally in my own home, is unless I can install solar, I can't afford to go all-electric. So what I'm trying to figure out, I think with new construction, people can sort that out in their, you know, single-family homes that are being newly developed. But for multifamily or low-income housing, and especially the 100% affordable, I don't want to stall this out in any way. I just want to understand so that we're not sticking people with utility bills that can't be afforded and that aren't at this time required to be fully sourced from renewables. So maybe I'm missing something. I would really like to be enlightened a little bit.
I could comment on that, but I don't want to get ahead of the queue of
Okay.
people who want to speak, but I'll come back to that. Yeah. What's a comment? Is that it for now? Should we go to, okay, Stephanie?
Yes, I'm on mute. I really appreciate the public comment and comments from my fellow colleagues on the council. So I would prefer that the affordable housing exemption is not there. Although some of the comments that have just been raised is giving me pause. And I would, we certainly don't want to have an adverse effect on lower-income community members. And so I think it could be something or should be something we explore more deeply because I don't know what programs are available to help offset costs for that income segment. And I would be willing to research that. Or Bruce, it sounds like you have more to comment on that. But I think, you know, what Peter shared, as far as we think about the lifetime of the building, I mean, when's the next time that a brand-new structure is going to, you know, make that substantial infrastructure change, right? And we talked about this when we were considering remodels. And that's also something I'd like to look at in the not-too-distant future because, while this is a very significant ordinance, and I'm so thrilled to be on the Climate Action Committee and finally see this do fruition. You know, we don't build that many homes, and I don't want to trivialize it, but the real impact would be on the remodels. And so I'll just leave that there and hope that we can explore that, like I said, in the not-too-distant future. So I guess I would be open to, you know, keeping the affordable exemption in with a commitment to explore it and really have some discussion around it downstream. I would like to share with the council and the public that as of July 26, the city of Emeryville became the 48th jurisdiction to pass such an ordinance. Many of them have the remodels in there, so I'd like us to, like I said, explore that. So we're somewhere in the 50th. So this is clearly a trend and I'm delighted and I'm anticipating that we will give it the thumbs up. But I think you, I don't think I have, oh, as far as the expiration or the effective date, I appreciate the need for builders to plan and community members to plan. I think July, you know, could be pushed up a bit. I would be open to a March date as well on that. And that's, those are my comments.
Thanks. Well, I'll add a few comments. I do feel that the effective date is farther in the future than it needs to be. And I understand the reason for not making it immediate because essentially there might be someone out there that we don't know about yet because they haven't come to bring in an application, but they're actually working on plans so that they can bring in the application. My understanding is, however, that we would probably hear from them before they had their plans all drawn up. People don't usually walk up to the counter and plop the plans down and say, here we go. They're usually coming in and talking with staff to learn what the rules are and what the situation is in Fairfax. I think we're now entering the, sort of the quiet, we're getting to the end of building season, as it were now, as we get, come into the fall, amazingly enough. And a date of July would, it seems like there's a likelihood that that's kind of going to get us right into the beginning of the season where people are bringing in their plans right at that point. So I think it might be, it might make a lot more sense, not only because of wanting to move this forward, but just with the schedule of the way people plan and then bring in applications and then get ready for the building season to make it earlier. My thought had been the same as Walt mentioned, actually, January 1st of 2022. But that's my thought on the effective date. I was surprised about the exemption for low-income housing and it's a nuanced thing. I certainly appreciate what Chance said, that one of our rationales for doing this for sure is the indoor air quality, which actually is affected mostly by cooking. The gas heat doesn't affect the indoor air quality so much as far as the source of the energy for the heat because if it's gas, that's exhausted to the outside as opposed to cooking where it's exhausted right into your space, right where you're getting ready to eat. So, but the not wanting to say that people who are in low-income housing would have less protection for their air quality. But my understanding of the costs is that, and I'm not, I'm not an expert on this, but my understanding of the cost is that it would generally be less expensive at the construction point because basically you don't need to bring in the gas infrastructure into the building, especially if you're not bringing any gas infrastructure into the building. You don't even need a gas meter. You don't need any of that. There's a lot of stuff that isn't needed. And so that would keep the cost down, which is very important for affordable housing, to make it more likely that we could actually get some affordable housing built. That's where the rubber meets the road, is the cost of the housing. Going forward, the cost to the occupants of the housing, fortunately, newer construction has, because of codes that we have, because of modern construction techniques, it's generally a lot tighter, meaning both that there's, it's less energy required to heat it and therefore there'll be less difference between the cost, depending on the source of the heat, because the building is well-insulated. It should have good windows and generally not be an old building with leaks and cracks. So that's, that would make the difference in cost less and actually make the indoor air quality problem worse for gas because the house is tighter and therefore there's less ventilation naturally. The the cost, I expect, and no one can predict the future, but I expect that the cost of fossil fuel energy is going to go up as we somehow grapple with the climate change issue that's becoming wildly urgent that we deal with. But as the society does deal with that, one of the ways that it will certainly deal with it will be either to directly put a price on carbon by legislation or for price on carbon to happen for various other reasons, like the or for price on carbon to happen for various other reasons, like the, like the, the gas infrastructure costing more because of more regulations on it, trying to tighten the leaks and get the gas infrastructure and so forth. Whereas the price of electricity, when it's coming from renewable sources, there's no reason for it to necessarily go up as a result of, of our dealing with climate change. In fact, what it tends to do is go down quite a bit. So I think over time, it is a smart thing for anybody who's listening to plan for using renewable electricity in the future. And as far as the deep green versus the light green, the, the difference will eventually, it's the, the, the difference between the electrification and the burning of fossil fuels in a home is that, and the same with an electric car, is that the electric grid is continuing to get cleaner and cleaner. Whereas the gas grid is never going to be carbon neutral. It's never going to be pollution free. It's never going to get any better than it is now. It's, it's, it is what it is. So again, I, I, I think that's the way I would address that question. So I would, personally, I would like to see the effective date much earlier. I would, I would actually go for January first of 22. But that's an arbitrary date. And I would not exempt the low income housing for the reasons that I stated. And yeah, I think, I think that covers it. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Chance? Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm supportive of moving the effective date forward. You know, I, I think January, I'm open to that. If, if there's a third council member that comes in on that, at least, that's interested in that, I'd support that. But also March seems reasonable, but just moving it forward does make sense to me. The other item with regard to the affordable housing, I don't want to get into the costs of things. But I feel like sometimes when we do these exemptions in ordinances, especially when it's for something that is another sort of good, like creating more affordable housing stocks. You know, we try to create those incentives, like, you know, density bonuses and things like that to try to get folks in. And like developers to, you know, come forward. And I feel like it's hard for me to feel like, it's hard for me to accept this incentive, knowing that there, the, the downside is that the low income folks that would be moving into affordable housing units would then be subjected to the health impacts of living in natural gas. So it feels like it's kind of a, an accept, like, an incentive with a poison pill a little bit. And my sense is if we remove it and if a developer really does come forward and, and says that that's the make it or break it thing, we still have this public interest exemption. That's, that's sort of broad. And yeah, Janet, maybe you could speak to that, that, that might settle this whole thing.
Well, yes, I think I can add maybe some, some more clarification to. You know, the Housing Accountability Act is really what this is going towards. And so it's, anybody who comes in with an application, a preliminary application under the Housing Affordability Act, you know, that sets everything in place for them. And so we, they have a vested right. And so we need to honor that. If this has not taken effect yet, we have to honor that. We don't have any, any real choice. But if you look at the public interest exception, that gives the council, I think, more leeway to consider. If somebody comes forward and has a specific exemption and says, look at the cost difference here, see this, see this, look at this. And then, you know, they're trying to do affordable housing. You can look at it under that, the public interest exception and decide at that time if they have convincing enough evidence for you.
So that's just, that was my, hearing all of this discussion, that, that's what I would put forward is the removal and, and lean on that as something that would satisfy our concerns around true affordable housing and, and this being a potential impediment. And then again, supportive of moving the date forward, just happy to hear what other folks think about January first, March.
Okay. Thanks, Chance. I think Stephanie, you were next. And you're mayor.
Sorry, two, thank you. Two quick questions. One is for Councilmember Cutrano. Do you agree that the cost for electricity is going to go down?
I don't know if the, the cost of electricity is going to go down, but I know the cost of fossil fuel generated electricity is going to go up. I mean, that's, it's almost certain. There's so many externalities right now around the burning of fossil fuels. So that's, that's the, I think.
The actual cost to the, to the resident. I mean, I wasn't talking about the broader cost to the planet. I was talking about.
I think the cost to the resident's going to go down over time. I, I don't know. Barbara, Barbara might know better being on the MCE.
Yeah. I mean, that, that is what made me, that the cost item burdening, burdening the residents in the, in the context of affordable.
They automatically opt in to certain programs, right? Everybody opts into light green, right?
That's, that's the default.
Or you opt out of MCE. But it's not, is it okay if I speak?
Yeah, and I did have a little more question.
Okay, why don't you ask that?
Well, the other question was for Janet. As far as so for a house that's under construction right now, is it only for new applications going forward? Is that how it works?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
If somebody has the vested right to build right now, this doesn't cover them.
Right. Okay.
So that, that was one of the things that I was questioning. If people have entitlements.
Right.
There, I just didn't see anything in this ordinance. All it says is what newly constructed buildings are, something that didn't have a use. I didn't see anything that has some sort of clause about already having entitlements. And maybe that's implied, but.
Oh, it's listed. It's in 040A.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other thing I would say, and then I'll speak to a few of the issues that were raised from Vice Mayor Hellman and Councilmember Cutrano, is I don't think the public interest exception would deal with the issue that we were talking about, which had to deal with whether or not you're burdening low income residents with paying higher, higher utility bills. What that public interest exemption looked to me was dealing with, there's no alternative way to do it. I mean, that's a logistics sort of thing to me. Nothing that deals with them saying, coming and saying, look, I want to build Victory Village two. And we're going to have very low, low income folks. Not all of those folks, low income, will not be eligible for CARE or FERA, which is, makes their bills lower. But going back to some of the questions that were raised. So sitting on MCE for many years and seeing what has happened over time. Because renewable energy has what's called the duck curve. And so solar, wind is not always happening. And so there are areas, and because storage is not where it will be in the future, where we can store huge amounts of energy at a reasonable cost. And even, I think Tesla has some amazing number of their batteries on their buildings. So, but they can do that. That's Elon Musk. But even so, it's not a reasonable cost. So one of the things that happened at MCE recently, and this is because of what happened when we had the big heat wave. And the CAISO was, last year, the CAISO was ready to do brownouts. The renewable energy could not fill the bill. And I'm not against it, obviously. I mean, we all want to be there. But MCE did buy a 10-year resource adequacy for natural gas because there was no other way to ensure that we would have power for all the customers. Now, we also have a lot of carbon-free energy and carbon-neutral energy, but we did have to do that. And Don Weiss, our executive officer, has talked about it. So all I would say is this, just my two cents towards, I kind of liked where, I'm fine with moving the effective date. I think March is more reasonable for some of the reasons that Mayor Ackerman brought up, which is that's when people are coming in with their plans, et cetera. It's kind of good timing. And I kind of liked what Vice Mayor Hellman was talking about and Councilmember Goddard. But really Vice Mayor Hellman talked about, maybe we leave it in for now, the affordable housing exemption. We look at this as something we can research further, we can change further. You know, our ordinance does not have to be static. And further looking into some of the issues that she raised, such as in the future, maybe looking at remodels. But I like the idea of kind of picking a little bit of a middle ground, which I know is not civil for folks. I would propose something like the March 1, 2022 effective date. Leaving in the affordable housing exemption for now. We can work on it again. And I don't remember what the other piece of that was. And just, you know, we can always look at these things in the future, so it's not going to stay here. And hopefully things will evolve much quicker than what we've seen for now. So that's kind of where I'm at. Because I do want to make sure that these folks living in some of our affordable housing, things that we hope to do more of, are not overburdened by utility bills.
Thanks. Renee, and then, then I, oh, I'll turn something in.
Yeah, yeah. I, you know, I was just thinking about it and I was going over my head. I'm wondering what the, what the rent sort of structure is with the residents, the tenants at Victory Village. It could be that all of the utilities are factored right into their rent and they don't pay more than, they pay 30%. They don't pay more than 30% of their income. So it's not as if they're getting and paying rent and then being charged separately for the utilities. I believe at, and, and I'm not sure about this and how the different facilities deal with it, but I think at the Redwoods, it's all incorporated into their rent. And so it's not, and I don't know, you know, we can't, we don't have control over that. But I would imagine if we did the work and the homework, we might find that that's all been considered. And given that the long-term cost, as we know, of, of not incorporating the gas infrastructure makes it less expensive for the developer than, you know, we may, it may be a wash and we may be, we may be okay. And for all the other reasons, I'm kind of leaning toward more taking out the exemption.
This one thought is just, the Redwoods is a facility. It has assisted as well as independent living, so I think that's a different kind of comparison. And frankly, I do not know how it works at Victory Village or Bennett House. But it may or may not be that they pay separate utility bills. So just think about that.
I, I wish we knew, but, because it would guide us a little bit in terms of we're sort of speculating how this would affect potential tenants. And I do support the March date.
Okay. I would speculate, but it's only speculation, that Victory Village and probably Bennett House don't have separate meters because there's, there's just a considerable cost in putting a separate meter on, on every place. And so for an apartment building with separate units, they definitely do. But they may not for, for those facilities. But that's only speculation and it's a good point. Janet, I wanted to just get back to a question about the, and I, I do support removing the exemption for affordable housing. But about that exemption, since we aren't in consensus about that yet. The, is it, I, I can't really quite figure this out from reading it, whether it would apply, let's say a developer were to be building market rate or close to market rate housing, and then they were to build 10% of the units affordable, which is a common scenario. Would this exemption only apply to those affordable units? Or would it be an exemption that would somehow cover the entire project? I certainly would hope not, but.
Well, if you look at it, I think I can, I can clarify this. It's, it's under the Housing Affordability Act, so it's under the new housing laws. That's what the government code section is. And so it, it's really for somebody who has, has obtained a vested right prior to the effective date of this ordinance. So if you keep, if you move the ordinance date up, January or March or whatever, you're closing a window here where.
Oh, I see.
You see what I'm saying?
Oh, okay. So the whole affordable housing exemption is actually kind of a temporary thing. It's only for people who are, who get in before the date.
Yes.
Oh.
I don't have any that we know of, but since it was July, all the way out to July, there could be easily.
It, it's not an exemption going forward. It's not something we're writing in for the future. It's just for that period of time. Is that correct?
Yes, it is just for vested rights prior to the effective date of the chapter.
Okay.
But the effective date is, you know, at the time was a year out.
Very important distinction.
Right.
We caught that. Yeah. All right. Somewhat less of an issue. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. I, I mean, it, it needs to really be there right now. If you're going to move the effective date up, it's not really such a worry or a concern.
Yeah. And if we move the effective date up and then meanwhile, the housing element work is happening so that possibly before an effective date, let's say in March 1st, since that's what, what we seem to be coming to. That, that might work out well, that it really wouldn't have, wouldn't have an effect on this. So I'm less concerned about it for that reason. So I guess, so I guess I would say I would really like to move the effective date at least up to March 1st. Preferably sooner, but March 1st would be fine. And take out the exemption for the low income housing or leave it, but it seems like it's less of a concern now that we understand that.
I would be happy to make a motion.
Please do.
Okay, I would like to move that we introduce by title only an ordinance of the town of Fairfax, adding chapter 15.05 entitled "All Electric Construction in Newly Constructed Buildings" to Title 15 of the Fairfax Municipal Code, SEQA exempt pursuant to SEQA guidelines, Section 15378B, 515061B3 and/or 15307 and 15308, with the effective date, March of 2022.
March 1st.
March 1st of 2022. And leaving the affordable housing exemption as is.
Second.
Period of time.
Okay. Michelle, could you take a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
And Mayor Ackerman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all. All right. That was 55 minutes and it was 60 minutes on the agenda. Shall we celebrate and take a five-minute break or shall we move on to item 19?
Can we take five minutes?
Five minutes. Okay, 9:55. See you back then. Okay, so we only have one, one agenda item left on the regular agenda and then finish up with open time and a few finishing items. So on the 10 o'clock. on the 10 o'clock rule, I, I would propose that we continue.
I agree. Do you need a motion for that, just to continue on?
Um, I don't think so. Michelle, do we need a motion to waive the 10 o'clock rule and continue?
Yes, please. Thank you.
I'll make the motion. I forgot to waive the 10 o'clock rule.
Second.
Okay, would you like me to take the roll call vote?
Go ahead. Yes, thank you.
So Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
And Mayor Ackerman.
Yes. Okay, thanks for bringing that up. Okay, item 19 then. That says to consider the, a couple of modifications with regard to the RESJ, and if we can get a presentation, I believe, Michelle, you were queued up to present that item.
Yes, and I will be presenting my own PowerPoint. I can't ask anyone else to advance the slides, so if you bear with me for a moment, I will queue that up. Okay. So as the mayor said, this is a resolution to modify the composition of and extend the term for members of the Racial Equity and Social Justice Committee, which we refer to as RESJ. Basically, there are two recommendations included in this resolution. First one, in blue on your screen, is to reduce the number of voting members from 13, which it currently is, to nine. That would reduce the number for a quorum to five. The second recommendation is to extend the initial terms of all RESJ members by 90 days, so that their terms, which are set to expire in September, will expire December 2nd, or it's actually December 1st, that's a typo. So the first recommendation about reducing the number of voting members is basically contained in the staff report and in the resolution, that with the higher number of members, there's a higher quorum. And the quorum of seven of the current 13-member committee is harder and harder for the committee to meet because there are only seven members left on the committee currently. So several meetings have been canceled because they had one member missing. They were not able to have a meeting. Reducing the number to nine would mean they only need five members present to continue to hold a meeting. The other half of the resolution extending the initial terms, they were set last September when you formed the RESJ, they were set for one year, and they expire September 2nd. Extend, extending the terms would give the RESJ additional time to come back. With their recommendations, they have not yet come to the council with their recommendations. It's up to the council how long you want to do that. If you extend the terms for 90 days, that would give them to the December 1st council meeting. So I don't know if you have any questions about the resolution or what adopting it means. I hope to answer them.
Thank you, Michelle. So do we have any questions or clarifications? Vice Mayor, comment?
Yeah, I just, this probably seems pretty obvious, but this should, should the resolution be adopted, then that would leave your, that would reduce the RESJ vacancies to two, is that right, or?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Two plus two youth members, non-voting youth members that we.
That is correct. I'm only referring to the voting members. They're the only ones that have an impact on the quorum.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions or clarifications, we can go to public comment and then come back and, and discuss this.
Okay, so if anyone has any public comment, I see one hand raised, and I have unmuted you, John or Jane.
It's Jane Richardson-Mack, again. I think my feelings have posed them before. I don't think this committee is working. It hasn't produced anything. It's spent more money than any committee in the history of Fairfax, I think, has ever been given and spent on nothing other than a facilitator, because they were unable to hold their own meetings. In addition to asking for money for therapy, because it was so difficult for them to hold these meetings, that's more money to be spent, and nothing has been produced. I think this committee was formed much too quickly. It wasn't vetted properly with the public. Our, the public input has not been welcome, ever. We've asked repeatedly for explanations of what has been said that was so harmful, and nothing has ever been forthcoming for that. The, in its mandate or its mission statement, it says it's meant to be inclusive in word and deed and equitable. It simply isn't. It only is for the small group of people who are in lockstep in thinking. Anybody who thinks differently is not welcome at the table. And this is not, that's not the right way to run something for a whole town. I mean, if you want to have a little private club of people who, you know, have a problem, that's one thing. But if this is something that's supposed to be inclusive and equitable for all, it doesn't mean racial equity only for people of color. It's supposed to be for everybody. Just because some people happen to be born white doesn't mean we need to be excluded from the conversation or not welcome. It's, it's not working. I think it's time to just step back, stop, and start over again. And only this time, don't only pick people who all think alike, speak alike, worship at the same altar of thinking, so that nobody else has a voice, nothing else can be heard. This is like the absolute opposite of racial equity. It's just simply not, it's not equitable. Everybody isn't included. I, I don't see how, how you can't see that. This is, it's just wrong. It's not working. So too much money has been spent. It's time to start over, please. And, and especially with the PPPSA, since there's only one person. Get rid of that committee. We don't need it. Our police department is perfectly fine. It's, it's, this is the wrong, the wrong grid was applied to Fairfax from the beginning, and under, in a heated moment when things were, you know, it was very painful for everyone. As, as a nation, it was painful, but it's not, it's not Fairfax. The whole thing is just, it's been derailed. Please, start over and give everybody a voice, not just a small vocal group. Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you. The next speaker is Naomi Alessandra. And I have unmuted you.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you all. Thanks for being there tonight. Thanks for bringing up this important resolution. I don't really have anything prepared tonight or anything, but I just want to reaffirm the importance of this committee and its subcommittees. The absolute need for us as a town to reckon with and support racial equity and social justice. That is the core of this committee. That is why this committee was formed, was to move racial equity and social justice forward. And that is a really challenging thing to do. There are many reasons why both of these, both of these, both racial equity and social justice and all the ways that those two intertwine, many reasons why it is challenging to move the needle forward on those, as we've seen for many, many decades and centuries. So we just need to keep moving forward. We need to keep forging ahead, in my opinion, and supporting this committee. And I think the best way that we can support this committee right now is to support this resolution, to reduce the number of committee members, so that we can get to a quorum and start to advance the ideas of this, of this committee, so that we can get some things done in this realm of, of building racial equity and social justice in our town. I think Jane is, sorry, the previous speaker is certainly right that this, that this committee was designed to be inclusive and equitable, and I think the way that we get to that is by supporting the committee, supporting the committee members, and trying to work together to build that kind of inclusivity and equity in this town. So let's support this resolution, reducing the number, and let's extend, extend the terms for 90 days, so that we can get some, some good things done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Naomi.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is Richard, and I have unmuted you.
Thank you. So I support this resolution for a variety of reasons, some practical, I, I think the making the quorum more achievable in the short term is, is a good idea. I think as we all know, there have been many challenges to getting RESJ, you know, going, and it's, it's been a lot of dissension in the community. And so I don't think there's any benefit to try to, I, I think it's, I think it's helpful to extend the, the three months. So, so I support the resolution. I pretty much agree with everything that Naomi just said. I think it's an extremely important committee. I realize there's been a lot of resistance. I 100% disagree with the first speaker on every single thing that was said there. And so clearly, there's disconnects and there's, there's different points of view, but as I've tried to say over and over and over, since it was getting formed, while it's been formed and all the conflicts and acrimony since, is that for me, it was fundamentally about getting some conversations going. And the fact that people have such strong views and, and don't see it is just even more evidence to me why these conversations are needed, because I just feel like people are not hearing some things right now. And, and so it's not just about policies. I mean, hopefully, there will be recommendations. There's lots of work to do. There's good things to come about. I think I always envisioned that we were going to have some, some new dialogue in town. And, and I think it's worthwhile, and sweeping, sweeping judgments and assessments, and then like attacking the functionality. I mean, it's been, it's been very challenging. And I'm not going to disrespect the people on the committee who felt very fragile and under a microscope. It was new for people to even be on a committee and understand how those things work. And so there hasn't been a lot of patience, and there hasn't been a lot of sensitivity around that. But there is important work to do. There is important conversations to be had. There is progress to be made. This is not, you know, a, a, single-handedly an indictment on our police department or whatever. It was about getting conversation happening. It was about looking at issues from, with some new perspectives and some new lenses, and also getting new voices in the community. And I've brought this up in my comments before, and I'll say that again. People of color spoke up in this town that work here, live here, grew up here, and they talked about aggressions and microaggressions. And I don't care what anybody else has to say. You cannot tell someone else what their experience is. Those are, those are people describing their lived experience, and you don't get to just erase that because you have another opinion. So everyone can have an opinion, but you don't get to wipe out other people's opinions. So let's keep going with RESJ. Let's make more progress. There's, there's work to do, and hopefully, we can begin to come together around conversation, have some educational things, and have some, some dialogue, and, and, and get away from the acrimony and get some important work done. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
The next speaker is John, and you are unmuted.
Hello again, councilmembers. I'm just kind of thinking about this, just on the, I guess, the terms of the resolution. It says, so basically, there, there's initial terms of one year, and the resolution is extending it for 90 days through and including December 1st, 2021. And I'm just kind of questioning, so in the future, how, how does that affect future members? If this is the resolution, is it now a year and 90 days? But then we have the December 1st, like sunset date. So my first question is, how does that affect a new member, since this is a new resolution? Perhaps I'm missing something. And the second thing, my second point is is about the reduction of members specifically to get a quorum. I under, I understand that, I understand the point. However, I think that reducing the members, now you have less of a group. You have a smaller group that is, that's in the decision-making process, like a core group. And I, I think that originally having more people offered a better chance for more viewpoints. So what you're doing now, if you are going to pass this ordinance, is that you're narrowing the field. Basically, now there's a core group of people who, you know, can make their, just make the decision. And as you're aware, I'm not happy with the core group of people, but that's my own opinion. I just, then, I was questioning if this is a good idea. Like, perhaps outreach could be a better way, like more outreach, like, hey, more people to join the RESJ committee, rather than, you know, shrink the, the member count. I don't know, it's just kind of a flip, flip side view. Well, that's my thoughts on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
I do not see any more raised hands. Oh, yes, I do. Take it back. Okay. Next speaker is Deborah Benson, and you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, councilmembers, for hearing me. This, this mission statement by the RESJ committee is really a manifesto, you know, that was based on, on pridefully recording illegal acts by three out of four of our councilmembers who were denigrating our police by lying with people who were holding signs that were saying terrible things about our police. So that's my first problem. My second problem with this committee is that they have spent a year and $65,000 of our taxpayers' money to identify problems in Fairfax regarding racial equity and social justice, where people are not being treated well by either, you know, us, all of us, or our police. And so far, there have been no specifics mentioned, even though they've been asked for. And even though the, at least one member of our council has asked for a report as to, you know, what have you done? What do you want us to do? Where is, you know, what, what are you, you know, guiding us to? There has been nothing, nothing produced over a year as to specifics, as to problems identified, as to what they, what they are proposing. So I, I kind of feel like it's, 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 it's a waste of our, our year and our time as to moving this into a smaller quorum. That would mean keeping the core of the committee as it is, who, to my experience, as I've attended meetings, have no ear for any, any voice other than the one-mindedness of their, their purpose, which, which seems to be led by a, a, a book. So I would really ask you to limit their, their term, maybe disband them, and form something with enough members of, of a free-thinking quorum of our, of our public that could actually get something done. They haven't gotten anything done. I would like you guys to take it back to yourselves. Use the money that's been allocated to them, and the ideas that have been raised, and, and go forward from here, and just say, okay, thank you very much for your time. So thank you very much for listening to me. My time's up.
The next speaker is Mark Bell, followed by Lori Berliner. And Mark, you're unmuted now.
Thanks, Michelle. Ling Shen's going to go first. I can get back into queue, or I can go after her as you like.
You can go after her. I'll just reset the timer.
Okay.
Hi, so this is Ling Shen.
Uh, hi. So this is Ling Shen. It seems to me that there should be a referendum, that the public should should be asked, you know, whether to keep the ResJ or dismantle the ResJ. If this is supposed to be a democratic process where where you're representing the town and the wishes of the town and the public, then it seems like a lot of people in the public are not agreeing with this committee, with how they're doing things, and how they're not willing to listen to any other views. So then, uh, it seems that there should be referendum and ask the town what the public wants as far as this this committee, and that would be a a just way to to deal with it if you're talking about justice. So thank you. I think that's it. Thanks.
Okay, so Michelle, you want to reset the clock?
Yep, it takes me a second. Hang on.
Oh, my god.
I know. Okay.
Okay, I suggest anyone who has not seen a ResJ meeting to go to the YouTube Town of Fairfax page and start looking at meetings. I've been backtracking, but I can tell you the January meeting is probably a good place to start and then go forward. Uh, first of all, looking at this, for months, they've been talking about ways to circumvent the Brown Act, meaning they don't want to hear what the public has to say. And this has gone on for months, not just with the PPP essay. There also been complaining about the ResJ meetings themselves. And the way they've constructed the agendas were to circumvent the Brown Act, so logically, it would follow that all those meetings were illegal to begin with. Uh, not having a quorum with the openings that have been advertised for months means either A, people aren't interested in this committee, or they're not interested in joining a committee that functions or doesn't function as it exists. Think about that. Who has applied? How come no one has has tried to join? Going to the mission statement, on an earlier uh, meeting of a rough draft, the mission statement was calling for Fairfax residents to pay reparations to all people of color, especially the Mewoc. Now, the wording has been changed, but if you know that that was the original intent, it is obvious that that is still one of the principal goals of the people in ResJ at the moment. Uh, we can go on about impugning the Fairfax Police Department, who put the town's welfare first by passing up a raise last year to help the economy, but we have ResJ members wanting to be paid simply because of their skin color. We have double standards going on for the public at large and for people who are on the ResJ. This is totally unacceptable behavior for those purporting to be anti-racist, and this is per Ibram X. Kendi, who says this in his book, How to Be an Anti-Racist. You have additional fifty thousand allocated to this committee. Twenty thousand wants to be, uh, they want to spend on looking up racial covenants. They were outlawed in nineteen seventy-three. It doesn't matter whether you find them or you don't. This is the best they could come up with in a year as there being a problem. And basically, what we're looking at with these type of conditions is we have a ResJ that's promoting the concept of collective punishment, a war crime under the Fourth Article of the Geneva Conventions. By their statements and attitudes, they have put forth that any Caucasians, regardless of when they or their ancestors came to the U.S., are guilty of Spanish crimes simply because they are white. This is repugnant and repulsive. Will the ResJ response to this be, well, Geneva's in Switzerland, therefore, the Geneva Conventions themselves are racist? That's all I have to say, except it's time to move on and disband the committee as it exists.
Okay, um, the next speaker is Lori Berliner. You are unmuted now.
Hello, council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Lori.
All right. Um, well, I support the uh, work of this uh, committee, but I I really think it needs to come to a happy ending, and so if you extend it for that purpose with, I think it would be fair to ask for, you know, a report to be prepared in. So I think the most important work of the committee is actually of the subcommittee, the um, PIPSA, and I think it would behoove the town to urge the committee to, that subcommittee to meet with the new chief uh, to discuss with him his training goals and working on um, uh, you know, expanding a mobile mental health services as part of the mission that I think um, that the ResJ has been looking at. More services for that part of the population. It's really primarily delivered through the police department, and I think that's something that um, a simple sit-down could do. I think the 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 council would do well to sever um, this idea of a survey uh, from the work of the ResJ. In any event, you know, if you extend it, then the survey idea should be done by a professional, not the seventeen-question thing that I've listened to all the meetings. So I I think that 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 the idea of a survey might um, be helpful going forward, both for the police department and for the council. I think it would be um, interesting to do, and perhaps the bulk of the funding of the ResJ could be shifted over to that that purpose. My hope, and I put my hat in to apply to move this thing forward. I'm of a different perspective than the um, the the current members, and I'm a long-term resident, older person. I don't have any negative feelings about our police department, but I'd like to see uh, some kind of an idea, perhaps in conjunction with the um, town picnic. Maybe there could be uh, a get-together of folks to sort of turn down the temperature of negativity. Maybe that's how this thing comes to a happy ending. Maybe we can, maybe at that point, we can all meet in person and kind of discuss the whole process of that this ResJ committee has brought up. And maybe as a town, we can all decide that we can speak civilly with one another. Maybe maybe that's the work that needs to be done. So so anyway, um, I I I think reducing the number is not a a good idea, so maybe if nobody else is applying, but me, the thing just comes to a happy ending just by virtue of lack of interest. Um, I think all the people quitting tells you uh, lack of interest. So um, anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see any more hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council. So I will, if if I may, um, respond to a couple of comments. The with regard to the money that was spent on it, um, I think it should be pretty obvious that this is a very different situation, especially as this committee began in a highly-charged atmosphere and talking about a highly-charged topic. And bringing people in at a time when you think about it, like the Climate Action Committee, which I was a founding member of, there were seven of us, and we met for a long time and didn't get a whole lot done for a while. Maybe that was my fault, because as as the chair at the beginning, maybe I wasn't a good chair. I don't know, but we talked about a lot of things and had a lot of interesting discussions, and it was a long time before we actually came out with actionable items to bring to the council. But we weren't on TV. We weren't recorded. Basically, nobody from the public showed up for a long time. Fortunately, people are now. But it's a really different world when you're, for the very first time, you're on a public committee, and you're on TV, and you have an audience of people who are hostile to your very existence. And so I think it was a good call to have a facilitator. And she was a good facilitator, but it was expensive, and it took a while, and it seemed like it was kind of a training session in a way for a number of months as the facilitator helped to develop processes, many of which are still used to guide the meetings. So not only would I point out that we're not spending money on facilitation anymore, we all know that, so maybe we can quit dwelling on that. But I think there was a reason why that was a good thing for this committee and why this committee is in a little bit different situation than some of the other committees in town. And um, some of the other things that were mentioned, like possibility of members being paid or having access to some sort of therapy, they didn't happen. They weren't brought to council. They were ideas. The ideas didn't get taken up. So once again, can we just get back to the point of talking about what's central to this attempted discussion, which is how can we be a better town, be more welcoming, and be more fair to people, and try not to be so acrimonious about things? Um, I'm not sure that it's accurate to say a whole lot of people in town don't like it, because I consistently hear a pretty, I can name the people that continually say they don't like the existence of the ResJ, so I don't know if there's lots and lots of those people, but as far as the people who speak, it's a pretty small number. And I just wish we could just tone it down and just listen. The, as far as this particular um, item before us tonight, what I see it as is that we, and I support it as written, basically, uh, as recommended by staff. The, what I see it as is, as as people have said, ResJ hasn't yet come up with specific recommendations, which is what their charter was in the first place. I would like to see ResJ have a chance to finish that. And this is really putting a pretty short timeframe on it, so it's really sending a message to ResJ in a way that's, you know, you've got a few months. Let's try to get get something out. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean, on the other hand, that what we're going to do next after that. We, this doesn't, this doesn't say tonight what's going to happen in December when the terms would expire. What normally happens if there's, if a committee becomes a permanent committee, is that the terms are set to be staggered and so forth, and they're longer than a year. So yes, it's a good point that was raised. What what does that actually mean? I think it was John that raised that point. Um, I think what that means is we'll address that in December. It, we don't know whether ResJ will want to continue at the rate things are going, but I would like to give the members of ResJ a chance to finish, rather than just saying, well, you've just had your last meeting. It's over. You know, that's, that would be ridiculous. That would not be a happy ending, as one of the speakers said. She'd like to see us have to just end it right now, because this happens to be when everybody's terms expire. Um, I don't, I'm not concerned with with reducing the number of members at this point, because um, I don't think we're going to have, we've had applicants, applications open continuously. There's never been a day when applications were not open. And they're open now. It sounds like we might have one applicant coming soon. I welcome that. Not hearing about any other applicants, I don't think we're going to limit anything by having a reduced number of people, but what we are going to do is to prevent the committee from just never being able to meet again, and the last couple of meetings have not been able to happen because of lack of a quorum. So it's just trying to give a little bit of breathing room so that the committee can, in fact, what people are calling for, do something, come up with a recommendations. Let's give the committee enough space to do that. This isn't a big thing. And we can see where we go from there, but that's, I very much support it. So sorry for going first, but I just for one thing, wanted to say some things about the comment and put it in perspective. Um, Barbara.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for kind of giving that framework. I want to say that I'm supportive of the resolution as written, and to make a couple of comments, if that's all right, is that um, when we first started the discussions of having this committee, uh, one of the things I was sort of pushing for was less members, because there is something called group dynamics, and it becomes very difficult with so many people to kind of get everybody in sync, different thoughts, different mindsets, but I think nine is a better number for more than just the quorum. I think that will allow people to kind of gel together. And I have actually heard about more applicants uh, that already applied, but I may be wrong. Um, but I will also say that I'm, I was also on the Climate Action Committee when you were chair before you were on the the council, and it was different. It's a different kind of committee, and you know, there's a lot more love in the room. But I also want to say that I created that scorecard where we actually did get a lot done.
Yeah.
And, but it was a different kind of thing. Um, one of the things I would like to say that maybe catches things a little differently than what you said is I think there's been a lot of um, potential negativity coming from uh, the committee as well on certain things, and not being open to different ideas. And maybe it hasn't been captured the way everybody wants to hear it, but I think there has been sort of a a more narrow view, and I think it would behoove us to have some folks who are more interested in maybe a broader look at things as well, because all our committees, we try very hard to have people of different viewpoints. And so I'd like to see us look at that, and one of the things that, it is a little disappointing to me that when we did do the joint meeting, I had asked for some kind of an overview of where we were, kind of what the next steps were. And uh, the chair at that time did not feel that there was time for that, and people could go back and watch the recordings, and you know, I'll be frank, I've watched one meeting. Um, I haven't gone back. I I've trusted that you and Vice Mayor Hellman were leading the charge, as well as now Councilmember Cutrano. Um, but it does seem to me that I don't really know. I don't expect necessarily that there's big steps that have been made, but kind of the direction where the group is going would be helpful if that's possible, not to stop things from, you know, moving forward on specific recommendations. So I'd like to hear a little bit more. I mean, I don't even know what the mission and vision is. I usually, I remember when we did that for Climate Action, I think we brought it to the council. And so it'd be good to to hear that, but I will just say that I think moving forward with limiting the number to nine voting members is going to be more positive. And I also believe that having kind of a set date for recommendations is a good thing. What my concern is there that people will just, because they feel like there's not enough time, they'll throw everything at the wall. And I don't mean that in a bad way. It's just people will feel like they're running out of time, and I count on you and Councilmember Cutrano to scope things. When I sit on um, committees as a council member, I try to sort of think in my council hat as well about what makes sense to bring forward. So there may be twenty ideas, but it may be that you winnow those down with the committee to what are feasible for the first step or the second step. So I appreciate um, the direction this is headed, and I hope that we can all realize that there hasn't been as much inclusivity as well as thoughts. And I think that has created some negative or animosity on folks who have tried to participate. And maybe we can all say things in a better way. I know I've I've sometimes said things not in the right way as well. So uh, thank you very much for listening, and thanks, uh, Councilmember Cutrano and Mayor Ackerman for your efforts on this group, and thanks to Vice Mayor Hellman for her efforts for several months.
Thank you. Stephanie. You you're muted. I know you're you're also.
It's my fourth time tonight doing that. Um, I have so many thoughts, but I'm going to keep it brief. Um, I'm in favor of reducing uh, the committee member count to nine. Um, I think it would be odd I think it would be odd if um, you know, looking at the other committees uh, sizes, if that, if, if it created like an anomaly there. But ResJ was large to begin with. And um, I concur with Councilmember um, Kohler on the group dynamic thing. Um, and I think that there is a hope that you'll be more nimble and be able to take, um, be more productive in the meetings, at least I hope so. Um, I also would like to have some clarity on the applicants. If, if Michelle, could you tell us if we've had some applicants? And I've asked a few times if we have sent out a communication to the initial candidate pool, has that communication gone out about vacancies? Cause I think that's really important. So those are two questions and comments I had. And in response to Councilmember Kohler, as far as, you know, I'm a big proponent of having, you know, diversity of thought. You tend to get, you know, a better outcome um, and diverse perspectives. However, you absolutely need committee members that are committed to racial equities, that recognize that there's community members in our town that don't feel safe and have had racist experiences. So if you have applicants that come to our meetings and come to the table and say, we don't have racism in our town, this committee isn't, isn't needed, that's not going to be a productive committee member. So um, Michelle, would you mind enlightening us on the applicants to date?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Um, I jotted down both your questions, so I can answer them now.
Thank you.
Um, we do have one application received and I have um, communicated with her. And September first was the better interview date. So that will likely be on September first. And another applicant who has expressed serious interest, and I expect to get an application anytime. Over the months, there have been people, you know, coming to pick up applications, but none have been filed other than the one that I have. Regarding communication to the initial pool of applicants from last summer that the Council chose the original 13 members from, I have not reached out to that pool. I'm, I'm not sure.
Do you have action to do that from the Chair or from Councilmember Cutrano? Or what, what action do we need to take to do that?
Um, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Is that what they got? I, I'm a little concerned about reaching out to um, that whole group. And now we will, we only have two vacancies. I'm not sure. It's, I haven't done that in the past, but I've actually targeted a group of people to reapply to a group that, that were not appointed.
Well, I think there's a.
I've spoken to, I've spoken to a few ResJ members who thought it was a good idea and thought it was actually a very respectful thing to do. Um, so I, and if you recall, I think we had 24, I can't remember, it was quite a few, so.
It was.
Yeah. Bruce, Mayor Ackerman, do you have a point of view on this? Cause I think it's pretty important.
Well, I guess at this point and looking at what's before us tonight, it's, and other people may have another way of thinking about it. And I see Adam turned on his video, so, so maybe Adam would have some thoughts about this. But uh, possibly Adam, you or Michelle might have some thoughts about the legality of it, uh, about recruiting from the Council level since the applications come to the Council. I've, it's been my understanding that we on the Council are, we shouldn't really be going out and recruiting people to come into a committee. That, that's not really our purview, but maybe I'm mistaken on that. But just to finish my thought before I uh, listen to see what Adam has to say, I, in general, what I see before us tonight is an attempt to put off, let's say, any question of whether, whatever we might have assumed in the past that ResJ would be an ongoing, permanent standing committee in town, or that it might not, that it might be an ad hoc committee that ends at a certain point. I'm not sure whether everybody was thinking the same thing. And I'm not sure whether we really talked about it that clearly. Um, but at this point, looking at the fact that we did set all the terms at one year, and it's now one year, and thinking, okay, let's extend those terms for maybe three months or whatever number we settle on, that, that to me is basically putting off that decision. And in part, letting that decision be partly to see what the members of ResJ think about it, whether they want to continue as a town committee, given how everything has been. But just giving a chance to, if, if it is an ad hoc committee, giving it a chance to finish its work, which if we stopped right now, we didn't take an action tonight, it would just be like nothing happened. Whereas with just a few more months, maybe we could come up with some kind of recommendations from the ResJ that would be something we could consider. And that would be a little bit closer to a happy ending. Um, so that's what I see tonight. And therefore, I, I'm not sure about going and recruiting a whole lot more people to it unless we think about, is it going to be an ongoing committee or not? It doesn't make sense to recruit a whole lot more people to add to the ResJ if it's going to be in its last few months of existence as an ad hoc committee. So I don't know if I'm making myself clear, but that's my, that's what comes up for me with that question.
Yeah, that, that is, that is clear. Thank you. Um, I, I would um, I guess respond that it wouldn't be a recruitment communication. It would be a communication advising of the vacancies. Uh, so I see it as a little bit different, not an active recruitment, but I do, recruitment, but I do see your point. Um, and I, I think, I don't think we need to belabor this. I think we're getting a little bit off topic, but um, I'll just say that I find it shocking uh, that, at the suggestion that the, that the work wouldn't continue past December.
Um, I, I always assumed, just, I'm not sure why, but I always assumed it would be continue at an ongoing committee. That's just in my own mind, means nothing. But what I'm seeing now is that I'm just not sure whether the people, at least who are currently on it, are interested in continuing this indefinitely. It's painful for them.
Yeah.
But I want to give them a chance to finish it to some extent if they can.
Got it.
I have that commitment. They can decide what they want to do, but I don't want to just cut them off right now. And we've realized, oh my goodness, everybody's about to expire. So I want to fix that. So Adam, uh, I'd like to hear what you have to say, whatever it might be. Thank you.
Mayor Ackerman, you, you basically covered what, what I was going to say. And then I think that um, a lot of very good discussion tonight. But I think the main point was, let's let this group have their meetings, make a recommendation back to the Council. And, and you have two vacancies. It looks like you have at least one applicant of those watching tonight's meeting or reading the newsletter where we continue to um, uh, share information uh, about openings on our, on our various committees. Will have the opportunity, you know, to apply and or attend, you know, these meetings um, between now and the end of, of, of this um, 90-day extension. So I, I, I don't, I, I agree with what you said earlier. At this point, I would not um, take any further action other than what's recommended. At your September first meeting, you, you will most likely interview at least one member and potentially another applicant. Um, and at that meeting, uh, you could also direct staff to do a, a deeper dive, um, if you felt like you need it uh, to do more recruiting so that you can fill those two vacant spots. So I think the recommendation tonight is, is a good one. I think your discussion has, has been um, very healthy on this. And, and I, and I, I'm hearing a consensus uh, from the Council. And I would recommend that you move forward and we can continue this discussion uh, in, in the months to come.
Excellent.
Chance has had his hand up for quite some time.
Oh, the virtual hand, I'm sorry. Sorry, Chance. Go ahead, please, please.
No, it's all good. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I've appreciated the conversation as well. Um, at least, at least the conversation on the dais. Uh, and I um, yeah, just wanted to let the public know too, as well as Councilmember Kohler, that um, if you go to the town website, the Racial Equity and Social Justice uh, Committee page has the um, Vision and Mission Statement um, as well as uh, some additional information and things like that. Uh, but that's a, if people are curious, you know, what the original committee came to uh, when they designed that, that vision and mission with the facilitator, that's where that, that's where that lives. Um, uh, you know, I think there've been a lot of interesting points raised about, um, you know, what the, what work has come from the committee thus far. I think there've been a lot of concerns about harmful rhetoric as well as um, literal fears about um, physical safety um, that have come to, to Council um, from members, um, some, some members who are no longer part of that committee. And so I think that took precedent, uh, and I believe that takes precedent over, you know, uh, an update. I think we did receive some updates at our budget workshop. Uh, and um, that gave us a sense of the direction that all, the committee and the various subcommittees were uh, intending to go. So I, I think I, I brought that up um, at our last meeting, but the same things keep getting rehashed by the same four or five people from the public. So I just want to continue to make that clear to the other folks who are listening in and watching the recording of this meeting. Um, yeah, I, I'm totally supportive of, of this. And I, I um, I hope we can just get to a place where there is a quorum. Cause uh, you know, I've only been on for four months and, and four of those, two of those four meetings were not actually held. Um, so I um, I actually haven't been able to deliberate and discuss with my colleagues and try to figure out what the path forward is. But this uh, decrease in numbers from 13 to nine would uh, afford us the opportunity to, to actually have a discussion at our meeting tomorrow. Um, yeah, and then I guess the final thing I just wanted to say um, is just, you know, I hope, I hope that um, everybody sort of continues to practice active listening out there and, 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 and bring empathy into some of these discussions because when we talk about um, dismantling racial equity and social justice work, when we talk about trying to get, you know, erase that work or get rid of that work in our town, uh, when we talk about um, you know, trying to, you know, avoid people that are, you know, coming to, to advocate for anti-racism, uh, and, and when we're pushing back against anti-racist work, it makes me wonder what town I actually live in. Because the opposite is not, is, I don't think that's the, those are the values of Fairfax. Uh, and I, I'm just disheartened when we don't come together and, and really try to listen to understand the way that that does affect um, marginalized folks and, and people of color and youth of color and women of color in our community, uh, especially the ones that have stepped up and been so courageous thus far uh, on the Racial Equity and Social Justice Committee in this strange Zoom pandemic era. So I just wanted to, you know, put that hope out there and just call, call people to, to that um, that ask, that, that very um, yeah, that, that, that very serious ask, you know, anybody who wants to reach out and talk to me one-on-one, please do. But that's, I, I'm very serious about, about that ask. And I, I hope you take that very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Chance. And I absolutely confer, concur. I, I, I don't know, I'm not saying it as eloquently as I'm sure, as Chance has said, or I'm sure other people can say, but I've certainly said many times, I just wish we could just have a conversation. It seems, it's a hard thing to have a conversation about, but Fairfax prides itself on being open and tolerant and able to have meaningful conversations and able to appreciate our differences and our uniquenesses and our, our unique people that live here. And all of a sudden, this topic and this conversation is just not going well. And I think there's some on both sides, as it were, as far as just how we speak or how we react to the things that other people say. But um, some of the things that have been said, it would take a saint to react, to not react to it in any way. It's, it's pretty outrageous. And so I'm disappointed and I hope we can do better. And that's why I support the thing tonight is because I'd like to give one more little bit of a chance to try to, as one of the speakers said, come to some sort of happy ending. I don't see it as an ending. And I don't know how happy people are going to be with it, but at least bring it to some kind of an ending as opposed to just letting it end right now because of where the numbers work. Let me just mention one quick thing, just in terms of precedent. I was on GPAC a long, 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 long time ago. And GPAC was odd. And Michelle tells me she can't imagine that anybody would have set up a committee like this, but this was before her time. GPAC had no limit to the number of members. Um, when I joined, nobody, I wasn't taking a slot. It's just, you could just join GPAC. So I joined GPAC. It was great. Council appointed me, I went to GPAC meetings. And we ended up that a number of people right around that time left. And so we had all these people who were, who had never officially resigned. They just didn't show up to meetings. And because it had this unlimited number of members, it had a large number of members and we had a really hard time getting a quorum. And so we did something kind of similar to this. We went to Council with a proposed bylaw change, and that was accepted by Council. And the whole point of that was to just say, we need to have a mechanism for trimming our membership. So if people hadn't come to a number of meetings, then they would, they would be off the committee. And that way we could have a quorum. So there's, there's precedent for where you just get into this sort of numerical problem. And you have to fix it or else the committee is just going to die. So this is, I think this is a pretty straightforward thing to, to agree to. But Renee, go ahead. Thank you.
Um, yeah, no, I hadn't, I hadn't chimed in and I have so many thoughts. I'm going to try to be super brief. I, I, I went to the Vision and the Mission Statement on the website right away when I received, um, we all received an email today. Um, and uh, and, and I just want to read the first part. And it's, the mission starts with saying, we exist to eliminate racial and social injustices in Fairfax by developing an actionable framework through subcommittees. And those subcommittees are Community Education and Engagement, Police Practices and Public Safety Alternatives, um, Town Policy and Economic Programs. And we strive to identify racial inequities in our town and take immediate action to create policies and solutions designed to address these issues. Um, we stood, we stood up this committee in, in a, in a, in, in a revolution, in a time where there was energy. And it was, it was vital and necessary to call people forward. And we invited people of color, members of our marginalized population to come up and to, and, and, and really to lead, to jump in. And we empowered them as centering them. We, we supported their leadership positions in this, through this committee. And we started a process that was unprecedented. Um, a year to go through that and with all that we've, um, that, that we've heard and learned um, is not very much. Uh, it took me a year to get a stop sign in, in my first year of being on the Council. So at this point, the fact that we've had a good number of our folks of color, our young women of color decide to leave and claim that they feel afraid um, is not acceptable to me. And w- we're not a happy ending point. Um, and so, you know, it, it doesn't end when we say. And so, you know, it, it doesn't end when we say, okay, this was too hard, this didn't work, we don't want to put more money there, we've got dissent in the community. It doesn't end, it's a start. It's where we now dive in, we invite new voices to the table, we encourage and uphold the voices that choose to stay. I absolutely agree and support the resolution as is written, so that we are voting our confidence that this first phase was not a failure. It was an opportunity to see where these roadblocks are. And there have been some mistakes all the way around, but we're in this together. And I, I continue to support this group. I see it as long-term work. At the top of the vision, it says it was agreed, a long-term commitment was needed from the town to create an anti-racist community and one that invites and nourishes diversity. And we all talk about the lack of diversity. And that is our, that, that is our, that's a depleted world with no diversity. And we all strive for it. So it is a long-term commitment. I support moving forward, even this tiny step, so that we can see what we can produce. I agree with my colleagues, we need some focus, some direction, some expectations of what then the community can rely on, and then we can come to solutions together, even those who feel as though it's needing to be dismantled. I believe we can actually grow it stronger, and that there is room for, there are room for more voices, and there is certainly room to support, uphold, and help the voices that already exist on that committee to feel safe in order, if they choose, to continue the work. So thank you all for putting the resolution together so that we can keep this thing alive.
Mayor, may I make the motion? And just to say, I never received that email, and there must be something going on, because I didn't get Zoom invites either. But I would just, I'd like to make the motion to adopt the resolution modifying the composition of and extending the term for the members of the Racial Equity and Social Justice Committee, RESJ.
I'll second.
Okay. Michelle, would you please take the vote call?
Yes, that was Motion Kohler, Second Hellman.
Yes.
All those in favor? Councilmember Cutrano?
Hi.
Councilmember Goddard?
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
And Mayor Ackerman?
Yes.
All ayes, motion passes.
Thank you all. Okay, that concludes our regular agenda. I believe that this would be the time, we've still got a few closing items, but I think this would be the time to see whether there is anybody who still wishes to speak in the continuation of open time for public comment on items not on the agenda. So, Michelle, if you would open that up, please.
Yes, I was trying to get my, everything working back here.
In case people don't know, Michelle does an enormous number of things while we're on the podium, so, including providing the statistics, which we see every once in a while. And so she's got sort of five hands going at once. So I appreciate the, the need for a little pause to shift gears.
Thank you. And, okay, Mark Bell, your hand is raised, and you are unmuted now.
I want to respond to some things that the mayor said. Climate Action Committee, you didn't do much at first. How much money did you get from the town? The facilitator, someone from the community did a search, and the city of Boston was hiring at $100 an hour for a similar position to deal with, I think, 8,000 or 15,000 public employees. $100 an hour, not $350 an hour. You say tone it down and listen? Well, how about you? You don't seem to be listening. You have this prejudgment in your head. When people complain about this committee, you think it's because we're white supremacists? We complain about this committee because they're racist. Malcolm X, in his autobiography, went to Mecca, he did his Hajj, and he realized that it's not the color of your skin. It's a, it's a, really, it's a battle of class. Because in Islam, it's so far-reaching that there are people of every denomination, every color, every genetic permutation. And they go to Mecca, and they have this spiritual experience. And they're brothers. And that's part of the reason they took him out, because he was no longer teaching black against white, white against black, et cetera. It's that we can, we can unite and we can do something. Do you think the people in Marin City, who are in, what's it called, Golden Gate Village, who don't have heat, and their county refuses to do it, you think they really care that Fairfax has this committee that just spent $65,000 when they're looking at their third winter without heat? Or if they have, if they have auxiliary heaters, how they're going to pay their bills? Some of these people are probably working two and three jobs a day, just to try to stay, stay level with the, with the society. You think that we don't know that? But what we're looking at here is a committee that is totally off the wall. And you bought into it. So we didn't expect any difference from this town council in the way you voted tonight on that issue. But you're the ones who really need to listen, and you're the ones who need to go back and to watch and to look, and to see what a waste of money, 65,000, you say, just forget about it. Really? You just, okay, well, just flush 65,000, like we flushed 30, 40,000 on the Cascade Restriping, that was totally illegal, that, et cetera. Boy, you sure are good at flushing the people's money away when people come to you and they say the roads are deteriorating. Is that supposed to be racist because they want the town to, to take the responsibility for a town-maintained road? So you're the ones who need to listen. When you, when people are being labeled as white racists, which is what they, basically, this committee has done, it's pretty disgusting. And if you want to have somebody look for finding a program for things to do, I've said it many times, scholarships, grants, buy cell phones, pay for decent internet connection, do something. A bunch of talking heads for $65,000 doesn't cut it. I know I'm out of time, I'm out.
Thanks, Mark.
The next speaker is Richard. You're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. I don't think your intention for adding open time at the end was to give us a second round of rebuttal on prior topics. But since the former town member did that, I just want to say that I appreciated the mayor's comments earlier, framing some context around the funding of a facilitator. And, you know, we don't break down every other skill of expertise that comes with whatever the rates are. And, you know, we pay lawyers and accountants and other kinds of consultants, all kinds of fees. And so I don't, I don't feel that it's fair to, to pick on a facilitator who's highly skilled and trained and has particular expertise for whatever their going rate is. I particularly want to thank Councilmember Goddard for her remarks at the end of the last, you know, prior to the, the vote on the last item. Extremely articulate, and I really would encourage everybody to rewind and listen back to that, take a deep breath, and, and really think about what Councilmember Goddard had to offer tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Danette Citi. You are unmuted now.
Hi, guys. Thanks for letting me chime in again. I really appreciate it, since I used to live there and I care a great deal about Fairfax and, and some of what's taking place down there. I don't think that you should necessarily disband the RESJ, but I do think that I'm worried about whether or not it's going to be functional going forward. I, I do think listening to people's concerns is critically important. So when you talk about active listening, there is fair criticism here of what has taken place with the RESJ. And I agree with Stephanie about diversity. Diversity is extremely important because diversity of opinion. And I agree that you don't want someone who comes in and says there's no racism at all in Marin County. That person's not going to be helpful to you. But you do need people who come at this from different perspectives. If you don't, you land in, in what's called groupthink. And I see an awful lot of that taking place. And here's a description that I've written for a piece for the Marin Voice. And groupthink is characterized by a very strong desire for conformity among group members, such that it results in dysfunctional decision-making processes, outcomes, and damaging consequences. It's diagnosed by characteristics of excessive optimism and unwavering belief in the morality and righteousness of the group. Consequently, group members ignore or justify their actions on moral or righteousness grounds and blame others for negative consequences. Group members engage in attitude inoculation strategies to protect themselves from any persuasive opposing arguments. They engage in stereotyping the opposition as evil, biased, and spiteful. They appeal to our inherent tribalism by creating in-group, out-group conflict versus focusing on our shared humanity. What the RESJ needs to do is focus on shared humanity. This isn't a black versus white issue. This is a human issue. And everybody needs to understand that and stop this constant pointing of fingers and saying, if you're white, you're bad. That's not true. And I sent you a plethora of information, trying to get you to understand that some of what I hear coming from RESJ, and frankly, some of you, is questionable in the social science literature, that there's questions that are still being asked about implicit bias and even micro-regressions. I urge you to read the piece by, oh, shoot, can't think of his name now, but one of the articles I sent you, he's a, he's a black writer. And he feels that the book White Fragility is infantilizing people of color. I think you need to listen to his voice as well. So there's so much more to all of this that the RESJ needs to encompass, instead of adhering to a particular ideology that is obviously causing conflict in your own community. So I think that's what you need to hear, is that it's not working to bring the group together, to bring people together. So focus on your common humanity, and you will get there. Thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you, Danette.
I see no further hands, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So we will bring it back. So that's, I think that experiment might have worked well, the, the experiment of doing the 30 minutes at the beginning and then continuing it at the end. We'll see how that goes. But I'm, it, we now have slipped beyond our rather aggressive timeframe, but I didn't really think we'd finish the meeting at 9:30. So just saying. However, it is not midnight. It's 11:10. So congratulations. We have a few more little items here. Does anybody want to make any announcements or comments about any of the council activities that we put onto our, we have a written report for the public, it's in the agenda. But this is a point at which we could say something if we wanted to about any of those. Okay. And then Town Manager's report, and Mr. Town Manager, interim Town Manager?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll keep my comments brief. And clearly, I was a little too optimistic, but I appreciate.
You know, we did pretty well until right there at the end. That was, you know, that's a difficult topic. And yeah, that, that's the one that took longer. But that's going to happen.
Yeah. Well, I want to congratulate you all. This was a terrific meeting, from my perspective, really healthy and robust discussion, meaningful items that helped move a lot of, a lot of things forward. And so I appreciate the time that each of you spent preparing for tonight's meeting and being prepared to have a robust and healthy discussion. So congratulations. It's not easy, you know, being council member is not easy, and it is a full-time job. So I, I thank and appreciate each of you for, for your time. My report here, very brief. I mean, you know, I think I'll follow the council and put some of this in writing and attach it so you have it in advance. And that way you can ask questions depending who jumps out. So I, I will make my comments very brief. First, thanks to all of you for taking time to meet with me. Over this last three weeks, I've met with each of you at least three times. And I've gotten a lot of really positive feedback, a lot of detail on things that are, that are needing some immediate attention, other things that are just historic in nature to keep me in the loop on things that are important to the community. So I do really appreciate spending the time with each of you and giving your time to me so freely. As mentioned at the beginning of the meeting by your new interim Public Works Director, you have a very impressive staff. And it's really important to recognize how hard and dedicated, how hard they work and how dedicated they are. And I appreciate you recognizing our town clerk. I mean, Michelle is, you know, in a, she's juggling a lot of the behind-the-scenes to keep these meetings going and available to our viewers and, and people able to participate. And it is, we're doing it on a shoestring. And I think that is a common theme here on how, how, how things operate in the town of Fairfax. But more importantly, is the longevity and institutional knowledge that you have on your workforce here. That is uncommon in most towns, and something, again, that is worth celebrating. So a big thanks to the town staff for their hard, their hard work and dedication. I, I've met with a lot of people in this last three weeks, gotten a lot of good feedback and, and learned a lot about the needs that we want to work on in the near future, especially with capital projects. You heard some public comment at the beginning of the night on the conditions of some of the, on the roads, you know, some of the concerns about construction activity. And I appreciate, appreciated Councilmember Goddard's comments that this is the right forum. But, but we also want those folks to follow up with myself and our Public Works Director. Please, make sure that when you hear concerns or complaints out in the community, make sure that they contact me, you know, via an email at apolitzer@townoffairfax.org, or our Public Works Director, Jonathan Goldman, or any of our staff members, you know, depending on what department it's related to. We are here to help, we are here to serve our community, and we are all very interested in doing the best job we can. So if we can get that information, we'll take a look at it. Obviously, I jot it, jot it down those, those notes tonight on several comments that were made earlier. One of the items that, that I know the council is aware of and the community is concerned about is the watering of the trees here at Perry and Town Center. And so we, we are working diligently, and those trees will be watered this week by Friday at the latest. But in the long run, we are working with the Marin Water District, with MMWD, to use recycled water for landscape areas that are sensitive and need, need that extra attention. So I'm confident with our staff and with our town arborists that we'll continue to monitor the health of these trees and will continue to move, move aggressively forward this week in getting those trees watered, and then looking at the other areas throughout town that may need that additional attention. And so again, again, I appreciate the outreach from the community on that. One last thing I'll say here, I mean, I have a long list here of my own items. But I think you've noticed in the, in the town's newsletter that we've done a job, a better job of expanding information on there. And a lot of those items was, Councilmember Goddard mentioned, you know, that were in there about water safety and watering on Friday, or water, the drought issues and the crisis with water and, and the, and the watering restrictions that apply. And those links go right to MMWD's website that has a And those links go right to MMWD's website that has a, a laundry list of great items on there, so fire safety is out there and obviously the new health, um, the health guidelines on, um, on, on the new order that was just issued, uh, earlier this week. So with that, the last statement here is that the, uh, the, the council's health, the staff's health, our public's health is going to be very important, so as much as we are anticipating going back into live meetings in September, uh, I think we need to pay close attention to what's going on, uh, with the pandemic, uh, and be flexible here in terms of continuing to protect each other and our community, uh, from the spread of the virus, uh, and so, um, we'll use the newsletter to continue to push that information that we receive from the county, uh, and so, you know, that, you know, that, you know, at this point, um, I don't know if we will go back live on September 1st or our second meeting in September, which I believe is the 20th, the 20th, 22nd. So just, uh, be patient with staff here as we work with the council, um, to, to make that decision, but it really is going to be driven by the safety of, of our council, our staff and our community, our community members. With that, I end my report, happy to answer any questions of the council.
Thank you, Adam. Very helpful. Okay. I believe it is time to adjourn.
I know there's future agenda items and, and I have one thing that I'd like to suggest, Mayor. Just a quickie, um, back in the prior times when we had a pretty serious drought, I think it was fiscal year 2017, 2018, we adopted, I believe, an urgency ordinance, which was very simple, dealing with having restaurants only provide water to customers if they requested it. I don't believe that's still on the books, I think that was an urgency ordinance for that period in time. And I believe that our town clerk put, pulled it up, Renee and I were on the council at the time, it's a very simple thing, but it does save some water, not everybody drinks the water if it's provided to them, so if we do it as an urgency ordinance, it could be a very quick item. Just a suggestion and a request.
Okay. Stephanie?
Uh, yeah, two items related to, uh, future agenda, I did see on the link and I just want to confirm because I heard a couple of conflicting, um, I guess, comments on this, the ARPA planning session, um, will be on the 22nd of September and I just want to confirm that because it was on the 15th, but now we're pushing that whole meeting to the 22nd, so, um, I'm working on a couple of teams for some grant proposals and I just want to make sure we have the right, um, timing in mind, so that's the 22nd, correct?
If I can, uh, comment, um,
Yeah.
So right now it's a little bit in flux, um, as you look on, uh, as, as we look ahead here and work with staff with future agenda forecasting, um, one of the items that, uh, that is not on your agenda tonight, but it's in the discussion with our planning director is a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the, and the Town Council, uh, to discuss, um, the housing element, uh, and that item right now is scheduled for the 22nd and we're going to confirm that at our staff meeting tomorrow and then circle back, uh, with the council on, on confirmation. So what is on the, on September 1st is an update on our capital project. I think that working with our Public Works Director and our Finance Director, we may want to move the discussion on the American Rescue Act plan, uh, to the 1st, so it is, um, uh, also, um, connected to the discussion on capital projects because that too is, uh, an important, um, important, important discussion. So we'll work with the mayor and the vice mayor to continue the discussion on, on the agenda, um, and, and, and the right location, but I don't think you want to have a housing element, I think your housing element discussion will be very robust, uh, and, and, and as I understand it, you have not had an update on the housing element in quite some time, so, you know, this, I think we need an update as part of the first discussion on this item and then the joint meeting of, of the Planning Commission and the council will be the second focus of that, of that item.
Agreed, okay, thank you, Adam, I appreciate that. And then the second item, um, Mayor, I had brought to your attention and opportunity, um, related to, in small business employee, um, rights or coverage, should they get COVID? It's an ordinance that the county passed, as did San and Selmo, and I'm hoping we can bring that to council, do you have any?
I, how about if we talk about that when we talk with Adam? Because I've, I've talked with Adam about that and, and, and told him that that was something that you've been talking about, but I didn't know as much about it as you do and I think you, it would be helpful to just, we, we can talk with Adam together about it.
That's fine, but for the, for the sake of, uh, sharing with the council, I mean, our numbers are going up, right? So, um, when I sent it to you, I think we were in the under 10 new COVID cases a day and now we're in, we're nearing 50 new cases a day, so, um, this is something that I think is really important to our community and, you know, to no detriment of the small business community because they get a tax credit, so we can talk about it more, but I'd appreciate, um, consideration at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, yeah. No, from anybody. Okay, well, thank you all. And so I think that does bring us to adjournment, but we've got in memory of Jackie Kirk and in memory of Lola Duarte, who, a friend of mine for 40 years, who passed away. And our own town Rosie the Riveter, Phyllis Gold, who has come before us on council and, a lovely lady with a lot of history, so she has passed away. So in memory of these people, we are adjourning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all.
Good night. Thank you.